You better not die before I leave, Godless dude.
I can say the same thing to you.
I'll be dead meat if you do.
Good morning, everybody. I think we're all in and up and running now. Uh, today's the fourteenth of May, two thousand eight. We're meeting as the, convening as the Iron County Commission. To start out... I've got things buzzing and not working just yet. Uh, I'd like to start with, uh, Pledge of Allegiance and an opening prayer. Uh, I was going to come and ask somebody prior to, but didn't make it in. Uh, John, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Garrett, would you be kind enough to say an opening invocation for us? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, thank you for this day. I seem to be in commission meeting. For our, this beautiful land that we live in, for the freedoms that we enjoy. Each of us do our part to protect those freedoms and to protect this land that we, heaven that we love. We're thanking for all of our blessings. Wait for thy Spirit to be upon this meeting and the decisions that are made this day. Blessings in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Have you got a written copy of the agenda?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't realize that I hadn't passed that out. Oh, we didn't distribute that. We're right on top of things.
What other things on your mind these days, Joan?
Say again?
Yeah, what other things on your mind?
A little, a little bit. Well, and this is a three-page agenda, and I'm seeing a lot of two pages of these. Oh, there it is. Pass those down?
Give me this one.
Did you say work? First two pages are front and back. All right. I've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the April twenty-third meeting. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, okay. Get rid of that. Okay, kind of get the housekeeping items taken care of. Uh, first up, as far as departmental reports, I've got the county attorney first.
Any commissioners?
Morning, Scott.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. First, just a look at the budget. So it looks like I have remaining seventy-four percent, which is ahead of where it should be at this point. Uh, so I think we're, we're doing good budget-wise. And if we continue, we should come in under budget by the end of the year, so... Uh, any questions on, on the budget? The second page is just our statistical report that I kind of track. Um, this is as of Friday, last Friday, so fairly up to date. Just a couple of things of note. First, the felony cases that we filed so far, two hundred and fourteen, which we're not, we're not even halfway through the year yet, so we're off to, to a pretty good year as far as, um, felony cases go. Last year, you can see, we filed on four hundred and ninety-nine, and we're probably on track to reach that again this year. A lot of that has to do with the task force, and that's the second line there. You can see they filed on, uh, seventy-seven cases so far, uh, this year with, with my office, which if they continue at that pace, they would break last year's record of one hundred and forty-seven cases filed. So the task force has been busy again, and we'll see how, how they end up. I, I know that, um, Dane Glaser's coming out of the task force, and he's been a big reason why they've been so busy, so we'll see what happens with that change. And then the other statistic I wanted to point out was just under the child abuse sexual. So far this year, we filed on thirteen cases, which last year was eighteen total, so we're a little up in that category. And we'll keep an eye on that and see how that goes. Uh, no homicide cases filed this year, so knock on wood. Hopefully that stays the same. We like that when that's a zero.
We had that baby thing.
That was, that was not this year, though. That was...
Is that that old?
Yeah. That was about a year ago. So that would have fallen under two thousand seventeen. Other than that, the numbers look about the same, as they usually do nothing too startling. Do want to mention to the commission that, uh, this next Monday, we'll have a new deputy county attorney starting in our office. His name is Ben Thornell. He just graduated from BYU Law School, and, uh, he'll, he'll start with us on Monday. He has not taken the bar yet. He'll be doing that this summer, and so we'll be anxious to find out how he does there. We're excited to have him start out. I, I think he'll be a good addition to our office, and we're looking forward to working with him.
He's the replacement.
Yeah, replacement.
And we still have the investigator thing.
Right, still pending. Do want to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Edwards over there for, he had a jury trial in April on a child sexual, sexual abuse case, and he got the conviction on that. So that was a, it was a five-year-old case, a serious case, and he did a good job, uh, getting that tried and convicted, so... Appreciate him.
Anything in particular that accounts for the rise in felony and task force and assault?
Uh, just, I think, I think with the, the task force, I just think Dane Glaser's been a really active agent in the task force, and, um, you know, he's single and has a lot of time on his hands and...
What's JRI doing to these stats, Scott?
That's hard to quantify. I don't, I don't know exactly what. I, I think that, you know, I think that we're, JRI's not been a deterrent, I don't think, to drug offenders. They're not afraid of the, the penalty. It has, uh, JRI has lessened our, our caseload in, as far as our drug court goes. Fewer people interested in doing drug court, I think, because of JRI.
Are you gonna stick around?
Do you?
Little tan?
Do you want me to? I'd be happy to do so. Any other questions? That's, that's all I have for my report this quarter.
No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Uh, well, do you know Stephanie was gonna be here from the Children's Justice Center? Just... Okay, let's go to Justice Court.
Thank you.
Good morning, Laurie.
Thank you, madam.
Good morning. I wanted to start with just a quick review of the Justice Court budget. We appear to be on target. John, I didn't know if you were gonna bring those up or not.
Something to do right now?
Okay. Um, on the Justice Court budget, I just wanted to draw your attention to the contracted services because of the fact that we've had to have the, uh, judges come and assist us. Judge Bradshaw from Beaver, Judge Cox from, is it Milford? And Judge Whitlock from Washington County. We created this contracted services category, and so if you, John, wanna just, um, pop over to that estimate of the additional accord expenses... So obviously, we didn't factor this into the budget because no one could have anticipated what was gonna transpire this year. And from what I'm gathering, we're gonna be looking at about close to forty-four hundred dollars in additional expenses that we will be paying out to those judges for their assistance in helping us while Judge Miller is, is on the mend.
That's not near as bad as I thought it might be.
And where that compares to what, what it would have cost us to pay back wages and increase...
Well, I, I figured that out. So if we had, you know, if the county had paid the back wages, you would have been spending about eleven thousand four hundred and forty dollars. So you, this is a savings of over seven thousand dollars.
And does that eleven thousand project here to date, or...
That is based on all of this tr- uh, coming about. So I've, what I did was you've got the actual expense, things that have already transpired, then I've got an anticipated expense category. And I do want to make mention, though, that, uh, Judge Miller is going to make a real big effort to come back on June fourth for light duty. I think she's really needing to get out, and, uh, hopefully her, her doctor will be blessing that, and if not, I think she'll be back June fourth anyway.
So again, you underanticipated. You projected the temporary judges through up until June fourth.
June, well, no, June twenty-seventh, because she'll still be going through some of her treatments, so there will be dates in which they will still need to be here and be able to help. Do you have any other questions?
So those expenses have proven the fact that we have surplus time on the bench in a one-and-a-half full-time FTE.
Say that again.
The fact we've covered the court proceedings with a...
With three part-time judges, well, with three judges from other counties.
But the halftime we've already had, we bring in three part-time, suggests that, that the AOC's determination that we had about a point-eight FTE workload with a one-point-five TE staff. So the records bear out the fact that AOC was, uh, pretty accurate.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, regarding the Justice Court, you, you might see that there's a negative expense in the merchant fees, and that was simply that, I think you know, well, that we went to the instant payment system, so now they collect their own merchant fees. But we did have, uh, some fees for ending our relationships with the other two, two vendors, and, um, the only other, uh, negative in the category will be when we jump down to the, um, to the public defender. So we are fully staffed, uh, with the seven full-time clerks, as well as myself and then, uh, our judges. And I wanna put in a special thanks to our staff because, you know, we've had to move that schedule around quite a bit, um, and everybody's just done their best to make sure that the schedule runs smoothly, and that includes, you know, all members, and, and it's been stressful. So I just wanna especially thank the, the clerks, um, for their hard work at this time. I also want to point out, um, just kind of some kudos to the court and to the clerks, as well as thank, you know, um, not only the judges, but also the attorney's office. What we've found over the last three years, um, and I, and I, there, there've been some problems with the fact that we've had three different systems. So, and I think you might be familiar with that. The court had CASL, then it went to NCODE, then it went to CHORUS. And as a result of that, it's created, uh, problems where dockets that should have been closed were opened. It affects the aging reports. And so slowly but surely, we are working on all of that. Uh, we've got some of those projects completed. We currently came across, uh, a report that I had, the, um, court data request run for us, and there's over ten thousand cases on that report in which these cases are still open and, and, uh, need to be dealt with, and we're doing that with the help of, like I said, not only the, uh, county attorney's office, but also the judges have helped us to prepare some standing orders so we can deal with those, and, and that's just a matter of time. But I am proud of the way that we've all worked together and, uh, and the way that we're accomplishing and getting through that. Those cases ranged from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and eight. Another, uh, uh, issue that resulted from these conversions is the fact that we have forty-two cases, um, where there was restitution that was paid. And I think this came out on the audit. You'll probably hear about it, the Hinton and Burdick Audit. So we talked to CHORUS, and they told us that when they prepared the report, uh, I mean, when they prepared CHORUS, they could teach CHORUS a lot of things. They just couldn't teach it to read. So they know that monies were paid out on restitution, but the system couldn't pick up that the monies were paid in. And so as a result of that, you're, it looks like we've got forty-two open cases where restitution was paid out that was never received. We don't obviously believe that that's the case, but we will be working with not only our auditing department, Dan Jessen and, and Christine Lauter, but we'll also, you know, be working with CHORUS and Judge Miller as she returns, and we'll be, uh, you know, putting that to rest based on some understandings that we received from CHORUS and how we could deal with that. So I just wanted to make you aware of it, because you'll probably see it on the audit. That's all I have for the Justice Court. The budget review for the public defender, again, on target. Dan will be, on the, under the other current expense, that's where that, uh, insurance for the capital, you know, case defense budget is. And so I'm not sure if that's why we've got the negative eight forty-seven, but I will be getting an answer to that, and, uh, we'll report back to you on that. If I could jump back real quick. You know, at some point during the year, we are going to need to, you know, approve that contracted service budget, because obviously that wasn't part of our original budget. And then if you go to the next page, and this is not a, uh, slide, you've got the public defender case tracking. I've just given it to you through the first quarter. And that kind of simply is what it is. It's not gonna be up there. I'm sorry, Mike.
Oh, no.
The Slack office, uh, there's an awful lot of reporting and an awful lot of administrative hours, you know, comparatively to the other attorneys. I think that, other than, than their office and the Park Firm, everybody else does their own administrative work, so they're trying to break that out, what they spend in terms of administrative time and what they spend in terms of attorney time. And then last but not least, I just included really quickly there what we've spent on, um, appeals. I mean, it's two thousand and eighty dollars so far, and we're, you know, almost five months through the, uh, through the year. So still a major savings there. Are there any other questions for me?
Those overages on the temporary judges. Dan, is that something you just take care of? Mr. Jessen, sir? That's just a budget adjustment in the fall? We don't need, we don't need to do anything with it at the moment?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. IT. I texted her. She's, she's not coming, but I've got a couple of things to say for her.
Well, the budget is probably the first thing to hit with you guys, which is, it's good to see you this morning, too. Uh, there's a, a few things there, um, that I'll make mention of, and then if you guys have any questions for me, you can. But the software maintenance line item, it's, um, we're only at seventeen percent of it left. And that's normal. For those that have been through it, I think all of you have. Software maintenance, all that's upfront costs. So come January, we pay it all. There's a few that go throughout the year. So we'll, we'll be fine there. Um, our computer supplies, again, um, we've done a lot of computer work. That's the reason why it's a little bit low. We've purchased a lot of keyboards and other things like that. I don't anticipate that getting under. And then our tools, furniture supplies, that one we utilized when we were coming back into the courthouse. We bought some tools and that that we needed, and that's the reason why it's, um, lower there as well. And then the telephone is the last one, and that's kind of the same thing as with the software maintenance. So the, the telephone, uh, we do a reimbursement to the employees that have their own personal phones, so that we get a big chunk that comes out right at the beginning of the year. And so that will level off and, and should come really close to that. So, but those are the, the glaring ones, um, as far as line items go. We're, overall, I'm, I'm confident the budget's fine, so...
There is Dave Nielsen, the replacement for Brett.
Dave and, and Ron both. So they're coming up.
But Larson is a new hire. That's a new position.
And so is Dave. Dave Nielsen is, uh, that, the other, we got two Daves now. So you got Dave Smith, who's currently with this, and he's the IT technician. So Dave, Dave Nielsen will be a web developer, and then Ron Larson will be our network administrator.
So who replaced Brett?
Technically, both replaced him.
Take two men to cover him? He's a pretty good guy.
Yeah, he was a real good guy. We, we miss him, but we're excited about the other two as well, coming aboard, but yeah. Um, I left you guys kind of a paper there for you that showed just a, a few little fun, fun snaps, snapshots of what's taking place. From all of two thousand seventeen, we, uh, we had three thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight work orders come in that were completed. Uh, that, if you average it out, it's probably right around three hundred and thirty-ish a month. So, and we're kind of on that same track right now. We've got, up through April, we've had one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven work orders come in that we've completed. And, and of course, that doesn't, you know, the everyday work, too, that we still have as well to do. Numbers are pretty high, fun. We're excited about the two new employees, and then we've got a few other things coming up, server replacements and some networking equipment that we want to replace as well, so...
So how's the workload associated, the new workload with public safety in this building? About...
It's about the same.
Cleaned up and...
Yeah, we're, as far as, yeah, as, everything's tied up, really. We're, we're good to go. We're running normal now. We don't have any additional... We've got some cameras that we'll need to do here, and then we'll always want to add a little bit more of the door control systems to each of the buildings.
What about the interruptible power, the IP system in this building?
It's, uh, yeah, it, it works a little. Sometimes the power to power just, it bumps so hard that it just goes right through our system. So it'll knock us out every once in a while, but...
How do you filter that out?
Big generator would be the biggest, best thing, and then a better... I don't know, because we got that transfer switch, so, and it's gone through it.
Would a generator kick on in time to save a surge, though?
Probably not.
Really not?
Probably not. Not if it's going through right now with that fellow switch. I don't know if we can, that transfer switch, anyway.
So do we still need to add a generator here, even with our UPS?
That's a good question, because I, um, depends. It really depends on how much money you want to spend on it and how much we want to be up. I don't think it's gonna resolve the issue of that surge coming through and perhaps frying equipment, but that switch itself is only gonna keep the servers up right now and the power, power supplies that we have. So if the power does go down, servers run, but employees do not. So their computers go down. There's not enough...
Or how long of battery backup do we have?
For this, well, to power up all the servers, we're estimating, estimating about three to four hours, and then the servers will die.
On a normal power system, that would be way adequate.
But those are not tied into everything else throughout the building. It's just that server room, so... That gives us time to shut things down, so we don't lose things, but if we want to go that route, I'm happy to do that, if we want to...
Well, I think we need your recommendation before we proceed with anything, anyway.
I'll look into it, and I'll get some numbers and all that back to you on it, and we can make a, a good decision there. Any other questions for me? I like being quick.
No, not for me.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Uh, I got ahold of Stephanie at the CJC. She is not going to make it. However, there's just a couple of things that she just wanted brought up. This upcoming Saturday is the, is the Children's Justice Center fundraiser. This is their, uh, one of two major fundraisers that they do every year, which goes to funding a lot of training, improvements to the center, all sorts of stuff. Uh, right now, they have two hundred and fifty-six people pre-registered, uh, which is great. That, that's up from years pre, from years previous. So she's really buried in trying to get that up and going. The staff at the CJC this week also goes to the annual symposium put on by the Attorney General's Office, and that's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So trying to get the, the fundraiser up and running, knowing that they're going to have to be out of town the last three days of the week. So that's kind of what they're up to. Uh, she wanted everyone to know that you can still register, uh, on the website, on the Iron County Children's Justice website, or on the day of the event, you can show up. Uh, if you do want a shirt with your name on it, and, uh, make sure you have the right size, they need that information today before noon to make sure that those shirts come in and are available.
So you're representing the commission on the run, of course.
I'll be there. I, I haven't, I, I've missed very few since their inception. It's a, it's a run slash walk.
It'd be a run slash roll.
There is a stroller division. Uh, it, it's, it's really a fun event. It's a, it's a great opportunity to, to get out and rub shoulders with people that you don't see very often. There's, they've got great support. There's usually oranges and granola bars at the end. Even if you just wanted to show up at the end, you didn't have to run. You could, we could sneak you in the back, and you'd be standing there...
I need a few more granola bars.
Sweating, eating a granola bar at the end. Uh, it, it's, it's a fun event. They, between that and, uh, Dancing with the Community Stars, they basically raise enough money from those two events to operate all year long with, with the extras that they need in their program. So it's a, it's a cool event. It's a lot of fun. But that's all she had to say.
She runs a very good, very needed, very valuable program.
And they are, uh, I don't remember if she talked about it last time or not. We've got the mental health counselors now successfully embedded in the two schools, uh, in Parwin and Cedar Mill, and she's currently working on a grant that appears that, you know, she was actually approached to, to do the grant that are going to put victims advocates slash social workers in the police department, the Cedar City Police Department and the Sheriff's Department, to embed them in there to, uh, help out with victim coordination and victim services right from the get-go of the call. So that's a, another grant that looks like it will be fully funded even down to the paperclips, so... She, uh, she's a rock star, that lady.
Unfortunately, her clientele keeps growing and...
Right.
But, uh, it's amazing what she's done in Kane and Beaver Counties, because they didn't even have a CJC, and all, all those many cases that were, weren't taken care of or weren't taken care of in the way that the young people need to, to have, um, be, be dealt with. be, be dealt with, so what an amazing service.
Yeah, that's, it's just impressive every time you, every time you go there. We can't be actually done twenty-five minutes early, or is there, have we got any other?
Oh, better call it off for lack of interest.
I just have one item to report. Uh, we were, we were successful in making, uh, or finalizing the agreement with Cedar City for the trade, uh, for the gravel pit. And, uh, so we, we traded for the public, we traded a piece of property at the Bullock Pit and a piece of property at Coal Creek, uh, totaling about six and a half acres, a little bit more, and the city, uh, traded us seven point five acres, uh, west of the Sunset subdivision on the Bumblebee Road, uh, well, Bandenburg slash Bumblebee. Uh, we will be able to excavate that, uh, pit, uh, there's good, a good gravel source there, and it will also become a really good recharge basin for the Quitchippa Canyon. So it's really a win-win situation. Just appreciate the Cedar City Council going along.
Thanks to Mr. Cousins for dogging that through over the objection of some influential people on the staff of Cedar, which was really a total bunch of, anyway, thanks for doing that. It was a, no, yeah, that's why it's stupid to. Yeah.
Yeah, so the few things that they asked us to, to do, uh, extra. Uh, Steve and I went, and Steve made a wonderful presentation, and they asked me why, uh, you know, uh, we didn't, well, there was one question, why, why we didn't want to have to report, uh, on our plan for excavating, and I says, "Well, we're professionals. If we do anything, we, we do it by M Shaw standards." Anyway, the council agreed and, and it was unanimous, so good, good trade. It'll be a win-win. That's all I have to report.
Well, we did receive report from Widener that SRS and Pilt had made it through. You read that?
Oh, really?
Make it? Did.
Oh, good. Did you get an email?
Yeah.
I don't know, I bought, I've never missed one of his emails. I don't know why I didn't get it.
It's really easy to miss one of his emails.
I mean, you know what I mean, it, it doesn't go to my, uh, spam trap or anything, so.
So on, uh, S, on SRS, is that going to be two thousand eighteen then? That'll have.
It's part of the fifteen, it's, excuse me, it's part of the seventeen thing, too.
Really?
Oh, awesome. Will you forward that to me?
That will affect us.
Eighty-eight. He simply says, "I'm pleased to report that Forest Service is out today with SRS payments for fiscal year seventeen, which will be counted as prior year payment for your Pilt payment one year from June. Your fiscal year eighteen SRS payment will likely come later this year or earlier next year," and then he goes on to his usual spiel.
Yeah, I didn't get it either.
Yeah, if you would forward that, I'd appreciate, you know, I, I did not get it.
One of his favored nation tratus.
Yeah.
Anyways, it was May, it was May eighth. Well, actually, he sent it to, to Clayson. I don't know how I got it, anyway. Anyway, he provided the breakdown, so it, uh, seemed like maybe we're okay with that, um.
Yeah, excellent.
I just, meeting in Salt Lake on the third with Garfield, Kane, and San Juan Counties to talk about moving along the Poland Rock Memorial Parkway, that's trying to gain some traction, that the lady that promoted that first off in the state isn't there anymore, so there's, so there's a scramble to get that back on the docket, so.
What day's that?
It was the third. So that's moving along to the, I was absent last meeting, being in DC to the National Council on Environment, on Public Health. That's always a very, I'm not sure what kind of a meeting it is. It drives home the need for services in the county and the state that, for people who can't take care of themselves. And there are many people who fall into needs on behavioral health, from addiction to mental disorders. So it's a very worthwhile conference. There are fifty-five hundred attendees and two hundred and fifty presenters, and it's done without expense to the county. But, uh, it's like CJC, it's, it is a program that takes care of people who are not able physically or financially or mentally to take care of their own problems, so. So it's quite an eye-opener. Then what's, do we have a Canaraville Water Meeting to follow up? Seemed like I had one from, can I?
Canaraville Falls.
Was it the twenty-third?
We ha, yeah, we have one this coming Wednesday, I believe, and I think the only thing missing is the inter-local agreement signed between us and.
Wednesday night.
Between us and Canaraville.
Two o'clock at Canara on.
And I have a tentative meeting in Kane County that day, so I'll wait and see how that fleshed out.
I may, I, I will probably be with the CJC up north at, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday as well.
I can cover that Canaraville meeting.
Well, I'm, just, the Kane County thing is tentative, but, uh, if it's held, I'll have to be there. And now the ordinary, uh, the monthly meeting of the AOG was supposed to be in Panguis this month. I suggested to Commissioner Taylor that he hosted in Escalante and drag us all over there to make sure people understood that Escalante was still in the five counties, actually still in the United States. So it was a, it was a good, it was a good thing. Uh, they're doing some busy things in Escalante, and, um, they're, they're quite progressive under a new mayor, and then, well, Taylor was the mayor, so with him being replaced by another good mayor and him on the commission, some, some good things are happening and down the sky hooping, so.
Monument reduction and things like that.
Laurie?
Can I interject?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Let you know that the auditors did get back to me, and the budget for that, uh, Capitol Defense did go up by that much. So that twenty-five, four, four, seven is all what we paid for that insurance. So what we had budgeted in was an increase, it was actually eight hundred and fifty dollars more than that.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing's going down.
Yes, John?
Uh, I just wanted to take a minute and, and draw everybody's attention. As, as you go through the building, there's, uh, quite a different look now. The, um, Rainbow Zine and Banner prepared a bunch of, uh, um, wall hangings and things for us, uh, that was paid for from tourism, and we're very grateful to Maria for be, being willing to do that, and, uh, it's really kind of finished off the, uh, the look of the courthouse. So it's, it's been very nice.
Great. And I did talk to Lester a couple of times last week about the elevator. I thought it was clear with the state and the elevator service company that we turned that loose, so we better follow up on that. He thought we were done finally.
Yeah, I, I haven't been sure which agency we're holding up on, we're holding this up, but I, we, do you? Do you know who I can talk to, or?
Well, Lester's handling it, and I don't know, he, he's waiting for a sign-off from Mr. Hunter from the state or from Tissin, service contractor.
Okay.
He said he's working on it, uh.
It is a genuine problem in the building.
It is, it needs to be up. But it's still beats giving them another seventy-seven thousand for nothing back when. Where are we on, uh, holding to paint off the retainage on this, Dan?
I believe, ask Nicole, give us an update. I think we're done, right?
I have drawn all the money out on the CIB loan and the retainage account, so I think we should be good to go to contact her and get it fixed. Finally had that happen just about a week ago.
They'll be happy by word of interest, the fifty-three million that CIB pledged toward the coal port in Berkeley, where is it? CIB had committed fifty-three million to help develop a load of Oakland up.
Oakland, yeah.
That's now come back into CIB coffers, so all of a sudden, they're very, very wealthy. But we're anxious to help their wealth with the payment on the courthouse.
George K. Baum sent out a report for the year. I don't know if you got it, and they, they showed, uh, the smallest, uh, bond they worked with was seven hundred and ninety-five thousand. Guess who's that one? And the largest was like twenty-nine million or something like that, anyway, so that was, that was their range for this year, anyway, so. So that was good, I, I, that was pleasing to me that we didn't have to borrow very much money for this project.
We're, we're more pleased that we'll be debt-free general fund of this county, soon as Dan tenders that payment to, and that is a very enviable position to be in as a county.
Yep. Absolutely.
All right, well, let's, uh, be in recess for another fifteen minutes until ten o'clock, if there is nothing. Again, let me remind you, we have a three-minute time limit. Open the floor for public comments.
Thank you, sir. I have my timer right here. First off, I'd like to say, where there are no consequences, there are no rules. And let that soak in a second. What I've handed you is part of the table of uses and the definitions that are there. On your first page there, at the bottom, it says accessory outside storage of flammable and hazardous materials. It gives the definition, means the outside placement of flammable or hazardous materials which are customary and incidental, those are two very important words, to the principal use of the property. Okay? Which are customary. Okay? Then on the next one, it's the next page, it says, I highlighted accessory uses, meaning a use customary incident, then they left out and incidental. Customary incidental to and on the same parcel as the principal's main use. Okay? So, then if you go to page three on your table, under accessory outside storage and flammable or hazardous materials, anything from R eight twenty down to R one-half, it says it is not. It is not acceptable. It is not permitted. Okay, so that means that every person in this county that has a propane tank or a wood pile for a burning stove, a wood burning stove, is in violation of this table of uses, as it is written. Therefore, that's why I say, where there are no consequences, there are no rules, because the county's not going to come out to every last one of us and tell us that we're, or cite us, that we're in violation of these things. Now, my suggestion there is if you look at the first page again, I put the word "not" in there, which would make it totally acceptable for them to exempt, you know, prohibit it. Okay? That would mean that I can use, I could have things that are customary and incidental on my property, but it will not allow somebody to stockpile ten thousand gallons worth of fuel that's, you know, or whatever on their property, because that would be accessory storage of hazardous flammable materials that is not customary or incidental to the use of the home. Okay? So, first off, I've been fighting this argument for over a year. I have not gotten any results from the county's department of planning and whatnot. But I would appreciate you taking a look at this and see if I don't have a reason for what I'm what I'm talking about. My three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest you take that back to planning and see if that isn't a very advisory.
Yeah, I've written a note.
Advisory thing to look up. Thanks, Ms. Williams.
Any other public comments?
Good morning. I am here because I have concerns about the elevator not working.
We've talked about the elevator already this morning.
Okay, I wasn't here, so.
Last week's discussion with Lester, I thought he told me we were finally in compliance with the state, whose name is Donald Hunter, and with Tissen, who's our service elevator contractor, so when we get break for noon, I'll call him and see where we are.
Yeah, because I contacted Lester last Wednesday or Thursday. He said he'd check on it and ask if he'd call me back, and he has not. Chad was under the impression it was working, I said, well, if it's working, then nobody told anybody to take the signs off. And as you're aware, I sent everybody an email, right here, with my concerns of somebody trying to get up the stairs or down the stairs and being injured.
I gave an email from you.
I sent an email month-ish ago about the fact that due to the programs that I am over for the county, I have individuals that are limited in their ability to traverse stairs without tripping or falling or running out of breath before they get to the top. And so I sent an email out to the commissioners, to John, to Dan, Chad, and Lester, and Mike Edwards, about my concerns about somebody trying to get up the stairs when they shouldn't, even though there's a sign down there that says, go to the clerk's office. I don't think if it was me, I would go to the clerk's office, admit that I could not get up the stairs, I would try to do it. So, anyway, I just have.
To that point, no one has ever come into our office and said, you know.
I'll call him soon as we
Yeah, they will.
Break for lunch and let you know.
And what reminded me is I just barely got off the phone with an individual that is coming over to meet with me, and I said, can you get up the stairs? And he says, well, I can crawl up, and I says, don't do that. You know, and I have told people I will meet them downstairs, which is what I had to do in the Fiddler's Building, but I met them upstairs.
Well, I'll call him when we break for lunch and let you know, because
I appreciate it.
I thought we were done, finally.
It would be good. Okay, that's my three-minute comment.
Thank you, Mr. Pressgrove.
In reference to that, I specifically remember in our last meeting that the state that the elevator was fixed, we were just waiting for the state inspector to come down and certify it. Is that where we stand on that?
The elevator inspector is with DFCM, his name is Donald Hunter, but he has to have a letter from Tissen, who is the service contractor. So it's kind of a thon-luded, everybody's trying to shift it, but according to Lester, he thought we were finally up and ready to turn it loose and make it work, or let it work.
Okay, seeing the other comments, we'll move on to agenda item number two. Tax matter, the assessor's parcel number, APN A dash five dash two, number two-five-seven-three.
Okay, I'll speak to that. So this is a deferral request for someone's home. In their packet, you can, if you can pull that up, looks like you've got it there. And the packet was in pretty good order. There's a fairly thorough picture of the person's finances, letters from family. There was one from the bank that we were not quite able to get through, but basically, you know, letting them know that they wouldn't be able to get a loan for that amount. And so the deferral request is, and what's the total right there?
Total is, is that a three, thirty, yeah, thirty-eight, eighty, twenty-one?
Yeah. Yeah, and we've had contact with that individual, and they understand that that's, if the deferral is granted, that that payment has to be made over the course of a year with the regular monthly payments. And they do understand that. And so with that, I think, is there any questions?
The amount that they're offering is two hundred a month, which won't cover that in twelve months.
Oh, okay.
I'm all for
Right.
granting a deferral, but. Have we done these for more than a year before? I'm trying to remember.
No, we generally.
Tell them to a year.
Yeah.
John, does that, do they actually think they can afford, think pay?
Is two hundred a month the?
I can do that.
Okay. It would have to be a bit more than that to get the full amount by the end of the year. And so if we, if we were to take that.
Three hundred and twenty-three dollars and change?
Three twenty-three per month for the next year.
Okay.
Okay. That's something you can do? So.
What is it again, John, three twenty-three?
Yeah, three twenty-three, thirty-five.
And that's manageable? That's manageable with you?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant this deferral settlement for property taxes for property parcel serial number A dash fifty-five dash two. The total amount of the taxes, penalties, and interest is thirty-eight, eighty, twenty-one. The monthly payment to be made is three hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second?
All in favor?
That comes through me, and we'll, we'll take care of that, uh, today. Can you come in? Actually, can you go downstairs now and, and, uh, I believe my chief deputy can help you with that? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number three is discussion and possible approval for the two thousand eighteen Cooperative Agreement for the Utah State University Extension Services.
Nope. That's the wrong one. I'll be right back.
We had everything in line to do this. And then it didn't get put on, so, uh, everything, I think we've discussed it and everything's, uh, in order. So, I move approval of the two thousand eighteen Cooperative Agreement for Utah State University Extension Services. And the amount is on there. Sorry, I should've looked it up on here.
Fifteen hundred and fifty-two thousand, six, thirty-four.
Say that a little, oh, okay, yeah, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. That's my motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion's passed. All right, item number four, presentation of the two thousand eighteen Revised Emergency Operations Plan with up, updated promulgation document.
Honorable Commissioners, good morning. Staff, you've allowed me to be here this morning. Uh, the Iron County Emergency Operations Plan is reviewed annually, and and this, this review began in January of two thousand and eighteen. And has, has gone through, uh, several, uh, just minor revisions. A lot of the grammatical errors were corrected that I didn't catch in the last review. And then we added a few parts, and I want to thank Mr., uh, Edwards for his help making sure that this was, the document was uh, in compliant with all the legal parts that, that are, are tailed in here. So what I'd like to do is just present to you the Iron County Emergency Operations Plan.
Thank you, sir.
With all of the signatures for the promulgation statement. That includes signatures from all of the department heads and of course from the county commission, my signature and the county sheriff's signature. Uh, with your permission, with your acceptance, this will go, uh, this will be distributed to all of our, our partners that we, uh, deal with, uh, all the different city councils and, and the different organizations, along with, uh, posting this on our webpage. And that's, that's all I have, just, just a formality of presenting that for you and, and having that done.
And I move approval of the revised emergency operations plan?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. With your permission, I'll return to my normal duties. Thank you.
Thank you, John, for everything that you do. We appreciate it. Number five, uh, discussion and possible approval for the Newcastle Fire Department Wireless Communication Facility Land Lease Agreement. Mr. Yane is with us again.
I've skipped a week or two, so I've held on. Here's, um, I think we all know what we're talking about when it comes to this agreement. Um, we've talked about it multiple times. The second page is the one that was, had the issues that we were concerned about. In section three B, and it was just talking about the process of them approving approvals and conditional use permits. And if you recall, I was concerned because it, as originally written, it could be construed that we would approve whatever zoning or conditional use permit they requested. And I didn't feel like that was appropriate for us to do in the agreement. I made some changes, um, they made some changes to the changes that I made. I'm satisfied with what, how they, uh, how they've amended that section there. So I, I would suggest it's fine for you to approve it if, if you're fine with the terms of the agreement. I don't have any legal concerns, um, at this point. Um, I have a, a copy here that also has the property description, which is missing in the copy that you have in, in Exhibit A. And also the site plan in Exhibit C that you do not have for you. But the copy that I have here online has all that in there. It's satisfactory if you would like to pursue the agreement and agree to the terms that are presented to you.
So this is the final document we're, we're considering?
If I'm fine with all the legality, if you're fine with the terms, um, it would be the final agreement.
Well, I'm fine with that without any to it. I move the approval of the, the option ground lease agreement between, uh, Iron County and the Newcastle Fire Department Operator, together with Hill and Reclick of Lee, the SR, and Insight Tower Development, two LLC. For a tower in Newcastle area.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's approved.
Very good. I need to, who do I pick up the contract?
Okay, so that's, actually, I, I do want to talk about that. Let's have you sign, have you got one in front of you?
Well, I've got this one that is missing some language.
It's just, it's just missing the, the Exhibit A, which is the property description and site plan. I can prep those printed out.
Okay, but it's got the corrected three B that you're?
Yep.
So if you don't mind, let's have you sign two of these. What we'll do is we need to get with the, the.
How come this keeps locking out on me?
Get them not signed.
Okay.
And then we'll get.
Peters to sign off on?
Yeah.
Peterson? Okay. And there's, there's a place on that as notarized as well. One of the signatures requires a notary.
Yeah, and I, I have another.
Not really, but, thanks.
So. That's the Iron County.
I just keep trying to scroll it from the round button, so this works better, thank you.
So, yeah, you'll sign it there, and then I'll put your name and title. I'll do the type right.
Oh, great. Okay.
How about we keep track of it?
So you'll get, get it to Wayne and have him sign?
Yeah.
Okay, and then if you just want to give me a call and let me know, I can pick it up?
Yeah.
And I'll.
Have you got one more card you can leave with me?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll just, I'm actually gonna attach it right there. Thank you, Mark.
If you get that to Wayne and stuff, then let me know, and I'll come pick it up. We also need a W nine with it, so we can write you a check, so.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah. Anything else? You all good?
I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We may not see you again for a long time. Been good having you here for about five meetings.
All right, uh, we're gonna step out of our role as the Iron County Commission, uh, convene as the Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency for item number six, which is our annual review of incentive requests for the following solar projects in Iron County. Iron Springs, Enterprise, Granite Mountain West, and Granite Mountain, Granite Mountain East. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you. It's, uh, a pleasure to be here today. Um, got the information for the request for these four solar projects, uh, as Sheriff Blake mentioned. Um, the, uh, these are all owned now by Dominion Energy, or this, that's the entity that we're working with on this. And they provided us all of the information that was required in the participation agreement for these four. Being, this being their first year doing this, we've tried to standardize this and make it as simple and clean as possible moving forward, um, for you and for, for all of the staff here in the county. It's been great working with, uh, John Whitaker, with Dan Jessen. We've, um, put together kind of a, uh, a worksheet for each of these projects that summarizes their, uh, their requirements to, to request this, and they have, uh, they have met all those requirements. They, they got everything to us initially by the date that was confirmed. We asked them to send a couple of things in a different format, just to meet the format that we want to do on this end. We anticipate moving forward, this will be happening earlier in the year, even before April, but, um, just kind of a learning curve for everybody involved on these things. But we're, we're confident that, uh, all of the requirements have been met for these four solar projects. I got some information here, just, this is combined values on these projects, the, uh, base revaluation for these four projects was, uh, on the property was a hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and ten since the installation of these solar projects. The current year valuation is four hundred and fifty-one million, uh, plus. And the, uh, combined reimbursement for these four projects is about three and a half million dollars. And that, these are each, uh, fifteen-year, seventy percent agreements.
So then that, that equates to how much property tax paid to the county that was retained?
Um, I, I need to get that from, from Dan. I got the information of what, uh, the, the, uh, reimbursement was, and that was seventy percent, was the three and a half million, so the other thirty percent is the remainder that's retained.
Thirty.
For all the taxing entities, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Can you run that, Dan?
I can. The problem is, is, and, and Danny, Danny and I were talking about this before the meeting. It's, it's almost not important. I know that sounds crazy. But since, since they took personal property out of the new growth equation, it's not like we're getting any real additional new tax with these projects now, except for the real property portion of these projects. What it does is it reduces, now that was the original, that was the original plan, right? That they would come in, they would build, we would give them seventy percent of their incremental property tax back and use thirty percent as new property tax revenue. The problem is, is that would've jumped our, our new property tax rate up to a new level, not rate, but a, but total amount of tax. And then as they depreciated their personal property off in twenty, over twenty years, we would've stayed at that same rate, because that's how, that's how property taxes work, which would've increased the burden slowly on the, on the consumers, on the, just the regular citizen.
Tax barrier.
So, and, and the whole reason is because they, when, when this whole thing started, it was, it wasn't realized that these prop, these solar panels would be personal property. It was thought, this is just real property that's gonna increase. But because of it being personal property, they depreciate them off, and that value goes to nothing. And, but, with the way property tax law works, we, we get what we got before, plus new growth. So by that, by the state changing that, taking the personal property out of the new growth calculation, it means that we don't get a bunch of new revenue from these projects. But it also means that the citizens don't see their property tax go up over the next twenty years. But it doesn't mean there wasn't a good, a good, um, impact on the county, basically. Every dollar that these guys pay in property tax is a dollar that doesn't have to come out of the citizens. So it's, it's a huge benefit, just not to the taxing entities.
Well, part of the benefit is it comes on without added infrastructure costs and fire and roads and, uh, place and all the other things that go into a normal development, so.
And we did get a big pop in twenty sixteen. It was a abnormal year before they changed the law, and we did see a, quite a spike in twenty sixteen, and that was gonna be a long time.
So the hope is always that the new growth is is off, will be enough to offset that by the end of depreciation on the curve, on the bell curve.
The way, the way it works now doesn't even matter. It's just that right now, citizens are paying less in property tax than they otherwise would be. Now, the reason they didn't, most people didn't see a decrease is because the school district did an increase in their property tax the very same year this started. Had that not happened, on average, most citizens' taxes would've gone down for twenty seventeen.
Was that the seven percent school board increase?
If that hadn't happened, most people's taxes would've gone down because of these solar panels paying in so much property tax.
Bottom line, this is a win for the citizens. Keeping their taxes down, or at least balanced without the increase of the school. That's good.
Moving forward, we'll, we'll keep you informed on all of these, and you may be aware that the economic development, uh, directors in, in the counties met with UAC and St. George a couple of weeks ago. And South Salt Lake has, had put together a, uh, a database of their project areas for, for these types of projects. And, um, UAC is going to be putting all of the project areas into this system for, to be able to track them. So we'll be able to pull them up at any time and look at that. I'm not sure what the timeline is on that, but they wanted to have that up and going before the end of this year. So that'll just be part of UAC website, and will be available to everybody. So I guess what we need today is just approval to, uh, uh, to issue that reimbursement since they met the, the requirements.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we, um, because the incentive, uh, requests have been reviewed and, and are correct, that we approve the, uh, the incentive payment to Iron Springs, Enterprise, Granite Mountain West, and Granite Mountain East solar projects within Iron County.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
It's approved. All right, to move on to item number seven, we'll reconvene, step out of, of the other role and reconvene as the Iron County Commission. Uh, Mr. Edwards, uh, number seven, discussion and action regarding pursuing legal action against opioid manufacturers and distributors.
It's just like bidding a project, make your way the plans and decide what it's worth?
Sure. So you have two different, uh, two different agreements before you, both of which would be, um, to hire counsel for the county to pursue action in the opioid crisis. The county previously adopted a resolution, it was, uh, number two thousand eighteen dash four, which directed, uh, the county to pursue uh, legal action. Um, and so this was my attempt to come up with a couple of different options for the county commissioners to consider in hiring legal counsel for that purpose. The two firms, um, at least the local firms, um, that I have before you are Doosnup King and Durham Jones and Penniger. The primary difference I would suggest to you as I look at these are regarding the fee structure. I don't want to go into the, the percentage, just 'cause I don't necessarily want to advertise how they're, how the percentages are different. I think that if you wanted to do that, we could go into a closed session and discuss their, uh, the competence of, professional competence of, of each one of these firms and determine whether or not you thought the fee was appropriate. Um, we could also have it a closed session to discuss the, the strategy that each one of these firms, um, has presented to determine which one you'd like to go with, because that's different as well. Um, and that's not appropriate for an open meeting, in my view, and that's part of the, the reason why you can't close. That's not appropriate for an open meeting, in my view, and that's part of the, the reason why you can't close an open meeting. But I would just suggest that one of the firms has a twenty per, well, I wasn't gonna go into the number, has a, has a contingency fee. It does not include expenses. And so you would pay expenses, and then you would pay the contingency fee. The other firm has a percentage contingency fee, which includes expenses. So that, there's a significant difference. So in one firm, if you were to recover a million dollars and you had a hundred thousand dollars in expenses, you take the hundred thousand off, and then you pay the contingency fee on your remaining, the twenty, the contingency fee on the remaining recovery. The other firm, it's just a flat expense that comes off of your total contingency fee, if that makes sense. I can explain it in more detail if you wanna go into a closed session.
Why, is Mr. Thayer the one that fell on the ice out in front of the Heritage Center that day?
I wasn't there when you met with one firm. When you met with Durham Jones and Penniger, I was not there. Mr. Thayer, I believe, is the primary local attorney.
Terrible spill out from the, on the ice, and I said, "Well, you're the attorney." He said, "I'm insured, don't worry about it."
I believe Mr. Thayer is the primary attorney, local attorney on the Durham Jones and Penniger firm. Colin King is, I believe, the primary attorney from the Doosnup King Law Firm. That would be representing the county if you were choosing, choosing to go with that firm. I'm happy to provide potential agreements from other firms. I know that other firms would be more than happy to meet with you. I know that both of these firms would be more than happy to meet with you again, if you decided you wanna meet with either one of them.
Let me, Mr. Chairman, we go into a closed session, so we can discuss this a little.
I'm happy to second that, but I'm also happy to move forward either way, based on the proposals.
I'd like to go into closed session just briefly, just to make sure I've got it straight in my mind, who, who is who?
Okay. And so the purpose of that would be a strategy session, discuss pending and reasonably imminent litigation, and also discuss the professional competency of the individuals involved in the agreement.
As far as the contract is concerned, we have legal authority to appoint professional services.
Yes.
So we're clear there, but since closed session requires a motion and roll call, I'd motion, I'd move that we go into a closed session to discuss the proposals we have for opioid legal representation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll step out for just a moment.
Yeah, the old building.
I like that old building, it's so brand new.
It wasn't designed for an entire room of teenagers, all jump, jumping unison. You start to do the physics of that, you know what I mean? That's, that's a lot of pressure, that's a lot of, 'cause it's simultaneous.
Who knows?
Yeah, 'cause I have one on the north side of the theater.
Every time you come, it's like, no.
I think it's track further than the month before. It's not like much of an accident before.
You have two times starting straight towards your song.
It's gonna be broken up.
Every time we strive back, back to that last.
When I play that, I fight a lot of battles.
So, so what if it's.
You know what's really funny about it is, this was a grad stage, this was a former dance. Like, mosh, yeah, a former dance, that's probably why he's sitting there. Wanna have a nice room to look at. He was wearing a suit, you know, and left, he was wearing a dress, and that's. Some kids these days. Maybe not.
I don't mind asking too, if it, if you guys are interested. I can see us, does that mean you? Wow, Dell. Awesome. So I think, I've always liked you. I don't know, this still comes into play. This is gonna make, this is gonna tempt you to work for that work, have a fun. God, it's supposed to be a bit, it's gonna skip you off. Why you keep laughing? Anyway, it should be quick. Yeah. Hey. Yeah, you agree? I think it's good.
Why are you changing that? Don't change it.
Hey, Lester. Everybody's talking about the elevator, right? You missed all that fun stuff. But are they gonna fix the labels on the numbers?
Yes.
Is that part of this? I just don't wanna talk about it again, after we all get it all resolved, and then be like, the guy in the booth that's like, "Who's gonna read through the numbers?"
I didn't realize you had a discussion about it.
Yeah, well, yeah. Several times.
Yeah, they're supposed to label the numbers, so it's B one and two.
And they have to change something else in the numbers, the two.
The outside numbers. I told them, I told them that, where they stick them on.
I like zippers on ones, but these don't, these are damners, but they don't. I like higher-end zippers, but these, I got such a good jill, I went back. These are your pro zipper, Ed, they're.
Well, I'm sorry, I've had both.
Oh, really? Hmm. It's kinda weird, but the shoelaces still can't, like, they're such good, you know. Your belly yours or something?
Oh, maybe.
The way you lift your clothes, I don't know. I don't know, there's something else I can't block. He will. We're back to kind of, what was that thing we did? I'm late to it, we don't talk now. They have to send up, they have to pull down. Sometimes. I don't care what else you do, or you feel it. Oh, you're out of here. Great.
Do all of the, yeah. Do all of the, this was all on the others.
I just, hmm, I think I might have one right. Oh, really? I mean, huh.
There's probably gonna be something with you.
Yeah. Yeah. Right.
Hmm. What if you're also like, I don't know, no, 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 no. Better. Has everything knowledge that, already I'm walking, I'm like, are we still there? You smell of the council, actually, I think it's hilarious. I haven't had most of mine, I know, it's okay, we're giving away this guy. But we might just have therapy sessions for some of these guys.
What are you guys doing? And most of them say, um, sway.
Yeah. Have some cry rooms there.
I'm like, I'm, I'm about to have the tissues, you know, you hear me?
So one of the, usually one of the litmus tests, or whether it's administrative or it's clinical, is whether it should be, or budget decision.
That would be funny, if you get some, like, you get, like.
It should be lower. But you're saying, I think that should be higher, I think that should be lower, and if there's.
I saw the same, my, my hair, having asked. Eight? Mark seven? I wanna say, whenever they first sent us, if I could send in a person, I'd be like, she's an instructor, I find it.
To react to this kind of a, it's like, you kind of, you're in there, and you see, it's like, the guy is, he has to be your lawyer, and you can. Part of the problem is. Because what happens when they depreciate those things to zero? Yeah, it's an ongoing operation, it's clearly, they're paying zero tax on it, on it, it's gonna figure a hundred million dollars, a thousand dollars of infrastructure that, you know, on paper is worth zero, yet it's creating all this power. Generating tons of revenue. And you know where that would probably tax, if you're getting one, where, what burden could be used as the citizen's. You know what I mean? I think that there's ongoing, there's a thing, I think they gotta look at it, because all that, except breaks, they're gonna be. They're gonna keep this stuff new.
Yeah.
It's gonna be an ongoing operation. I saw a, yesterday, that it cost a curve, really killing water power. And solar, it's got, sort of, they look at coal, they look at here, solar, and then, maybe it's natural gas. Solar has come in, you know, from underneath, almost over, at like, forty-six dollars or something. Coal is eighty six, we're not, solar has come in, how cheaper. And land is actually down. It says, you know, the low point of the article is that you can see a shift in. Investments in basically how we, how we power our country. It's like the coal's mercury, it's come down somewhere. It has, the weird perverse. Is, as a green, as a source of green power. It actually contributes to. You have these massive acres that used to be, you know, whatever they were, now they're black, so they absorb heat, it's never. So yeah, it's, it gets free energy in the sun, it's not even a matter of, yeah, it's smart. So it's kind of interesting that, you know, there is a, it's not. I saw different, interesting cities, and now they're using, they're really, they're painting those streets white. And they figured that, like, these, they figured they could save by the city, they could save by the ground. Power costs. Air conditioning, just by painting the streets white. Because it's, it just, it's just so cheap. Instead of the street being, or areas, and also, they paint those. Anyways, kind of interesting.
What they've done in the past, basically, someone came in, cost a couple of months, thirty dollars to do it, he's had a hard time, he's lost it. He thought it'd be effective, which makes sense, especially if it's a major rip then, and we can't wait. If you have families, just have our own, so we can just get that in. Was that part of them?
Did he say it to me too?
I remember we talked about it.
I was gone Thursday, Friday, so, and I have a stack of emails, but I don't remember seeing it.
Said ask about, um, the question, that he has for drinks, oh, maybe he made the phone call, maybe he called you. Either way, that can be, I just said, I'm not sure. And he told you, yeah, that was kind of the question I asked, maybe we about how much it got, they cost, now I can't remember, but in the long run, it's good for itself. Biggest thing is that we have. Fog, state or whatever, yeah, that's some more than just tying money, we don't have that, does that make sense?
Or break, when you, when you separate, and it's causing all this problem, yet you can send a snake down. Those are shares. What's up?
The time's time, especially, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good.
My question was in the budget, where would you add it?
All right, Chair declares the closed session, closed. Go back on the record in open session. After discussing the merits of each proposed contract. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, after careful consideration, I had moved that Iron County. Hire the law firm, the Phipps, Deacon Purnell, L L P, and Durham, Jones, and Penniger. B C and Coleden, Council of Investigation and Prosecution of Lawsuit arising under the laws of the state of Utah. Mainly for recovery for opioid settlement.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to vote nay on this one, but can count the two, so. Moving on. Yes, ma'am?
Is that a contingency?
Yes.
And are they, is Iron County joining in more of a class action than the number of other counties?
Yes.
In the state and outside of the state?
We would be an individual plaintiff. As are a number of other counties.
Uh, number eight has been stricken, has been settled. Uh, number nine.
They, uh, watched their names across the street, had the other trailer. No, uh, Gail, they were able to sell the trailer to someone else, they just, they were in a hurry, and so they, they sold it to someone else, so that's resolved. And it's been moved off their property, or will be soon.
Okay, number nine, there's a, John, did you get an email from Dan? With a. This is the discussion on possible approval of a multi-stage plan to adjust pay practices in the Sheriff's Department to improve recruitment and retention. Uh, this is an issue that we've been working on, oh, several weeks now, going back two or three different meetings. Uh, my apologies to have not gotten this information out in the packet, I had some technical difficulties that, and didn't get everything. Fixed and, and working until this morning, prior to this meeting. But, uh, I will, this group has been. Wow.
Where's the damn song?
The power.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan, Dan, I can pull it all the way out. You're gonna have to look at the other side. That one either.
We actually have another exit.
We have to be safe with our public safety.
Can I? Oh, there we go. Okay. Just a little bit of background, uh. Actually, I'm gonna ask Sheriff Gower to give a, a two-minute recap of. The issues facing the department, just a, a brief reminder of retention and recruiting issues.
Okay, I'm not sure, when I come before you, it was a few weeks ago, with, uh, some concerns with retention and recruitment at the Sheriff's Office. Currently, at the, at that time, we were, uh, between Corrections and Patrol, uh, we were faced with the possibility of losing up to thirteen. Deputies, department-wide, office-wide. Uh, some of them were military deployments, others are just, uh, could be a couple retirees. And then the rest were people actively seeking, uh, higher-paying jobs elsewhere. Since that time, uh, we've had one actually test, actually two tested, and one has got a conditional job offer to leave the Sheriff's Office. Uh, and he's one of the ones that I really, I really hate to see him go. Uh, but this is a, this has been an issue since, uh, you know, for, for several years now, where we are just been a training ground. To where we, we train good deputies, both in Corrections and Patrol, and then they move on, because we're not staying competitive, we're not, uh, that's all we're asking is being competitive. We're not, uh, we're not meeting those, the needs, you know, to keep those employees, those valuable employees with us. And then, and then we lose them, and we lose that big training investment, that, uh, you know, between the. Getting them through the academy, and through field training, and then the train, the ongoing training that, as they specialize in different areas. That we pay to, uh, get them trained up, and then they leave, and then the, the next agency that picks them up benefits from our training investment.
Sheriff, are we requiring them to sign the, the letter of intent to stay based on?
We do, we're, we're doing that now, but, uh, after two years, that falls off, and then we keep training them, and then they leave at the four- or five-, six-year mark, when they're really hitting their stride.
Sign an agreement to stay for two years after out of post, is that the?
Yeah.
That what you're saying?
It's a two-year agreement. And so, but, when, when a, when a deputy's really hitting their stride, is it five or six years? Where they're requiring very, very, very little supervision, uh, they're, uh, they, they've got their feet under them, they know what they're doing. And then the other agency picks them up, and we lose that, and that's, that's tough, you know, we want, I wanna see the Sheriff's Office get to the point where we are recruiting. And, and retaining good employees. I'm not saying that what we have now is not good, by any means, I'm saying, I wanna keep going down a road where we. Are able to recruit even trained deputies, laterals, to come, you know, to come and, and work for the Sheriff's Office. Because they bring with them experience, and, uh, and it's actually cheaper in the long run, when you have an experienced deputy come to work for you, because now I'm benefiting from their training investment somewhere else.
You remember that old bumper sticker some years back, that said, if you hate cops, next time you need help, call a hippie?
Yeah. So, that's kind of a recap. So, any questions before you move on?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure there will, I'm sure there will be summarize, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Don't, don't get too comfortable in your seat.
No, I'll stand.
Okay, so after the, the meeting, the, this plan came together after hours of, of meeting. Uh, I was involved in those meetings along with, uh, human resources, uh, representatives for the sheriff, Lieutenant Cothers, Lieutenant Slosser. And, uh, our auditor, Dan Jesson. Let me just kind of jump into this. Uh, what happened, so, i- if you remember in commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, two, or a couple of, of commission meetings ago, we asked, uh, Adrian Walker if he would. Uh, do some more comparisons and, and freshen up his data, so that's what he did. Back in our last budget hearings, Adrian presented, uh, a wage plan, uh, that was pretty comprehensive at that time, he also. The, the way that it was presented and the way that, and what we approved was very conservative of the entire wage plan. Uh, so he updated the comparables, uh, spoke with agencies, you know, not only. Class-three agencies, but also the other agencies that were actually in competition with, which are Wasatch Front, uh, Southern Nevada-type of folks. Uh, we looked at both the Patrol Division and the Corrections Division. And again, these are the folks that were involved, uh, what we came up with was, is basically a five-step process. To hopefully improve retention and new hiring. Number one, step number one, uh, in that comparison across the board with other agencies. Uh, we did not only, uh, looked at the comparison of not only beginning wages, but, uh, wages across the board with the, with the. Positions that we have in Iron County, which, uh, you can see before you, um, Corrections is on top, uh, then we moved to Patrol on the bottom. What we propose in step one is to update, uh, these identified public safety pay ranges, you can see the yellow is what we currently have as a minimum. Uh, a current midpoint and a current maximum. Uh, after doing the study across the board of, of comparable agencies, uh, we ask that there be a bump in those of. To that proposed minimum midpoint and maximum, uh, for instance, you know, just look at Corrections Deputy One, the current minimum is seventeen fifty-seven. Uh, there are some other factors in there that we'll discuss here in a few minutes, uh, the proposal to that is, is up to eighteen dollars, uh, at a four-point-five percent. Interestingly enough, if you look at the Corrections Corporal, uh, that has the, the largest bump, uh, and the Patrol Corporal. Those positions were found to be far below the average for those petition, positions in other agencies. Interestingly enough, in Cedar City's recent, uh, study and subsequent pay raises. That was also the case with Cedar City Police Department, that's not something that is. Unique to Iron County, that appears to be something that's been overlooked, for whatever reason, across the board. Step two, if we look at the way that we have, uh, that the, that the pay ra, that the pay scale is now. Uh, there's kind of no rhyme nor reason, uh, to some of the career paths, some of the, some of the job descriptions. A lot of them in the county were right where we need to be, and are, are appropriate, there's others that, to max out in your. In your, uh, position, is forty-plus years of service before you get to the top end of your pay scale. What we propose is that we standardize those career paths for law enforcement and public safety, and, and this is all, this all coincides with Utah retirement system. Uh, that you would come close to maxing out at a twenty-five-year mark, because that's the retirement age in U R S for a public safety employee. Uh, or a thirty-five-year mark for non-public safety, and, and these numbers simply coincide with the Utah retirement system. What's that? Tier two. Uh, and instead of going back to evaluating tier one, uh, we know that. That the tier-one process is, is never coming back, uh, U R S, you know, with the tier-two is where we are, and we don't. We, we wish that it would, that it would change, but we don't believe that it's going to, so, uh, we looked at the twenty-five-year range instead of a, a twenty-year range, which a lot of our employees are actually on, but we. We looked at the twenty-five-year career path on that, for the tier-two. So. Interestingly enough. Uh, right now Corrections' current starting wage, as a, a training wage, is sixteen dollars and thirty-two cents an hour. Uh, once that trainee graduates from post and starts in the correctional facility, we bump them to seventeen fifty-seven an hour, which is actually our budgeted wage. So we're looking at, well, then, to talk about Patrol, our current starting wage is sixteen fifty an hour while they're in the academy, once they graduate the academy, they go to seventeen fifty an hour. Uh, after they graduate the academy, and then after they complete the F T O process, the field training process, uh, they automatically move to eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents an hour. Uh, but that eighteen fifty-three is actually what the, our budgeted wage is across the, across the board.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we have an after F T O for Corrections or Patrol?
I'm not sure, but we, but we, but we don't.
You field train the same way to.
Oh, Betsy. Okay, and is that off of, is that off of probation as well, or just through the F T O? Okay. Thank you. When you look at this, there are, when, when you look at other agencies across the board, I don't know exactly how we got into this, but there, I, I couldn't find another. Agency out there, uh, that has this tier of compensation for a post wage versus an, an after-post wage. Uh, everybody is pretty much just paying that budgeted amount, uh, from day one. I feel like we need to do away with those training wages and, and start out, we still do have some protection there, because we have the two-year agreement. Uh, to pay back any costs that go along with their training, but. I couldn't find any agency that, that currently paid. A different wage, starting with, starting, uh, from hire to post to F T O, uh, that's just not standard practice.
So Mike, the training wage is just during the six weeks of post?
Um, it's.
Field training.
Well, in Patrol, so we pay sixteen fifty an hour while they're at post, and that's about six, fourteen, sixteen weeks? Seventeen weeks. So.
And the cost of post is provided by the state, the thing the counties puts up is the lodging and, well, pay the, pay the wage while they're in attendance.
And you pay for their mills and ammunition.
We've got that all broken down here in a second. Right.
The fact that post is paid for by the state, the actual training.
Right.
So we're, you're suggesting we, we start paying the active. Wage while they're actually in training, and we're benefiting them. We're doing them a huge service, we hope they come back and wait for us forever, but.
Right, and, and one thing that this is going to address is the, is the advertised starting wage. Where it's, I mean, we've already got that in the budget, this isn't anything that would require a budget adjustment. Uh, but something that's, I think, real detrimental to our recruiting is the fact that we're recruiting for sixteen thirty-two and sixteen fifty an hour. Starting wages, is that correct, the way? Is that correct, the way that we do it?
It is, and I can maybe add something to the sheriff's statement is that our applicants for these rosters have decreased in significant numbers over the last two years. The last roster for Joanna's in corrections, I think we had four people applying. Where in previous years, we would get anywhere from fifteen to twenty.
And of the four, two showed up.
Yeah, we actually had two. So, uh, as far as recruitment goes and even in the sheriff's roster, the, the numbers just are not there to even build, uh, a roster to hire from.
We've already chipped through that last roster.
Yeah, and I think we had maybe eight people?
Yeah.
Was it eight?
We had eight that qualified for the roster.
Yeah.
Out of that, uh, five were viable.
Viable. Right, and, and it's just something, I think, needs to be done to increase these numbers and get more qualified people to apply for these positions because it, it just isn't there anymore.
I've lost clicker power.
Oh, something happened over here. Let's see if I can. Oh, that's because I'm not on the program. Go ahead.
So, with that said, uh, step three, eliminate that training wage for newly hired deputies allowing them to start at no less than the minimum of assigned pay rage, pay range. A- a- and we could do that without affecting, uh, what we have budgeted across the board for those. Talk really briefly about the training costs. Uh, we sat down and, and calculated these out to the penny. So the new training cost, the tuition of the academy is picked up by the state. Uh, but the, on top of that, the county is responsible for fuel and travel, meals, uniforms, ammunition, and factor in overtime for officers who are actually covering that open position to, uh, while the, the new trainee is in the academy. The cost, the total cost to the county to hire a non-post-certified officer to getting them off of FTO is ten thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
You say a non-post-certified?
Well, yeah, to, so that's the cost for a non-post-certified. If we were, if we were able to hire post-certified officers, we would have a savings to the county of ten thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents in hiring post-certified officers versus someone that we had to send through all of the training. Is a, is a savings to the county of over ten thousand dollars. So that being said, one of the, the recruiting tactics, uh, that's become very commonplace throughout the state of Utah is offering a sign-on bonus. Uh, if we were to offer a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus to somebody who are already post-certified, we would actually be ahead five thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents in, in actual costs.
And we, we require a two-year stay on signature to, to do that?
Yes, we'd still re- still require the two-year, if they were to leave before that time, that would be prorated. That, that would work into the prorated cost that they would be required to pay the county back.
Shouldn't we crowd that to three years because I start to weed out applicants? You think that'd have a detrimental effect on people's willingness to apply?
Can I say one thing?
Please.
And those contracts are awesome when we, when we speak of it, it sounds great. But I'm telling you right now, other counties aren't hesitant. It's not concrete for us to have that contract. Um, counties right now are picking up other people by paying off that contract. Take that trained officer that's already gone through the academy and then offer them more money as well. Does that make sense? They will, you find the other counties that are paying out money to pay off those contracts.
So they're gonna s-
You're aware.
Gotcha.
Allow that, allow them to pay off the contract?
Yes.
I think like it ought to be binding, we wouldn't allow them to pay it off.
I don't know that we can, I think as long as we get the money, I don't think we can dictate where.
Right. Especially if we prorate it down, I mean, it's, yeah.
You're, you're not gonna be able to make them, you can't like, they're bound to work for the county. I mean, that's.
Dentured servitude.
That's not gonna happen.
And what goods are contract, none?
Well, there's a, a remedy, right? There's that, that repayment amount, right?
Right.
Pay the money back.
Oh, no, you can do that, but you can't say, no, you can't leave even after you pay that amount. You have to stay here with us, I mean.
So we do indeed allow them to pay it off.
Yeah.
Do we prorate, would that, was that, was that, was that anticipated to be prorated down to five thousand after somebody? I mean, if it's a two-year contract, would it prorate twenty-five hundred dollars a year?
And what i- and I'm, so what we, what do we require now? Uh, what, i- is it wages? What is it that we require be paid back on our current contract?
It's, it's about a three thousand dollar amount. That it, they would prorate it by months that you had actually worked.
It decreases every month. It's, it's, it's amortized or whatever over a twenty-four month period.
So they would, for however much you had spent working. Now, the contract doesn't start until they are done with post. Their two-year period starts after they complete post. Is how it stated in the contract and then that amount would start going down each month.
Right now, it's covering food, food, ammunition, you know, just the hard costs we can quantify.
Okay, this, this then is different because this is a sign-on bonus.
This is on top of that. This is actua- this is a sign-on bonus.
So you, so if, if, if this were to be implemented, you'd probably want to update it to include.
Exactly.
Whatever repayment of this.
Oh, yeah, this, this would be.
Be a different contract.
Yeah.
Start essentially when they start working.
Where they're already certified.
Training period and, and be gone.
Right.
Sheriff put a three-year sign-on help or hinder your ability to?
I don't know, we'd have to see. Uh, I, right now, gosh, a three-year, I just, I don't know. I, I really don't know. I've just, I know two years is the norm, is, is kind of the standard.
Standard across industry.
Yeah.
You gotta have something because otherwise it, what, what prevents a guy from signing on, getting the bonus and going to another agency much later?
Right. You could hop around and get hired by four or five agencies and make a, make a pretty decent living.
If I'm correct though, if they're already post-certified, they get the signing bonus, but there's no reimbursement. There, there's, because you haven't spent any money sending them to post. But there is nothing to, to.
That's why you'd save the seven hundred and five thousand seven hundred thirty-one eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, and this wouldn't be, thi- this is only for post-certified officers, uh, and, and, and verified post-certified officers, which all that verification i- is going to come out in the background investigation. Uh, but this isn't, i- i- if we determine that the best candidate is somebody that we need to send through post, this is, they don't get the five thousand dollars. They, they get the training to go through post. This is, this is only lateral move, post-certified, uh, who can pass the background check and, and, and become a hirable deputy.
And there's this one thing I want to back up to, uh, you know, the ten thousand number. That's the hard costs. Those are like the hard costs that we can put a dollar figure on that it costs to send them to the academy. Uh, beyond that, uh, while they're in field training, while they're, uh, then now you've tied up another, uh, another deputy to train them, which now that's, that's a cost. I mean, it's, it's tough to put a, you know, an exact cost of what it is, but we're still, it's an unproductive, it's an unproductive team.
Actually, his, his whole cost during field training is an added expense because.
Exactly. And it's tough to put a whole, you know.
Haven't increased your patrol division at all. You've just added a rider.
I'm still, I'm still deficient in my sh- my, my staffing and, uh, we're still running overtime.
And to some degree, you've, you've minimized the efficiency of that officer that's providing the field training.
Exactly.
Completely minimize it. There's, the, the field training officer, it's basically useless.
Training mode.
During that time, he's in training mode, not.
He's not out working, he's not out, he's just simply mentoring that, that new trainee.
And, and this is a true cost. If, if we were already hiring guys laterals coming on, then you might make the argument that we're really not saving that. But every new hire we have is a brand-new guy. That tells you something about maybe our policies because every single hire, according to Mark, is, is a new guy. So if you can now get some laterals coming over from other agencies, um, it's a true cost savings.
And we, and we haven't had any lateral, even applicants in recent rosters, have we?
Yeah, it's, uh, and if we do, it's, it's rare.
We had one for the jail, it's been, oh, Betsy, from Utah County, I believe is what she works. But because the pay that she was making up there to come down to us was just not even, it was just kind of a slap in the face that she decided not to do it, so, and she had years of experience underneath.
So step four.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
Those, those officers that are training another officer, are they part of the, would, would that training even fall under the two-year commitment that they had after they went through FTO? Because here they are, here they are not being a viable, uh, officer, but they're still counting down on their two years. Do you understand?
Yes, uh, we actually talked about, uh, the possibility of that bonus kicking in on successful completion of the FTO program. Is that, does that answer your question?
No, the, the, not, not the trainee. The trainee in the FTO program has, has a trainer.
Okay.
Okay, that trainer has gone through FTO, he's now off of probation and he's on the two years his commitment is, okay?
Okay.
Now that he's not a viable officer because he's training another officer, he's still, you know, at the end of that two-year commitment, he can leave. Is that correct?
So.
He wouldn't be a trainer during the.
So, to address that, it would, uh, usually, so to become a, a field training officer, i- it's actually a post certification. It's not something that necessarily that the, that the sheriff, uh. Requires. Okay, and that's, so by, yeah.
It would be past that two years probation.
Yeah, by policy, you're, you're not gonna have an FTO. A- and, and for the most part, uh, uh, field training officers are those with four, five, six years or, or beyond experience that are, that are able to, to impart their knowledge to the new guy.
One, one other thing I want to throw out is you're going to start paying these, uh, new trainees at the base, uh, rate, correct? Which would increase the pay from what you're paying them now, right?
Yes.
Proposal.
I propose that you follow the US military's, uh, way of doing things. For every month that you're in training, you owe two months of active-duty service before you can, uh, get out of the military. So that would, you know, if, if training is seventeen months or something like that, then they would owe, uh, thirty-four months to the, to the county. Just a suggestion.
Okay.
Well, similar to that, Ms. Pressgrove, I think the main question is, does the two-year commitment start after the field training is complete or not? If we, we don't start counting the, against the two years until the officer is out on the street, field-trained and ready to provide duty. Is, is that your question? If it is, it's mine.
Yeah, and, and in essence, uh, for every month that they're in training through FTO, then they owe two, two months to the county before they, before their contract.
Well, that's be the same difference as long as we start their two-year, uh, state commitment after the field training and that accomplishes the same thing, doesn't it? So when does it kick in, Mike, do you know?
What's the length of the field training period? Does that vary? But the li- actually, come from, uh, the, from post, what's the length of the field training?
So, the field training.
Sixteen more weeks, okay.
You're looking between academy and field training, uh, brand-new, no, any certifications, not really.
How much, Sheriff?
Thirty-two weeks.
That's just what, seven months, six, seven months?
Better part of a year, yeah. Uh, and with, a- a- and to mention when we talk about this lateral, the lateral policy as well, uh, that field training period can generally be shortened by as much as a third, or, or two, shortened to as much as two-thirds. You, you may have an officer that's able to get off of that from, from hire to off FTO in four weeks instead of thirty-two weeks.
You're an experienced, if they come to us with, uh, state certifications and, and substantial experience, uh, of, of field training is this area familiarization and teaching them our way. And it's, it shortens it right up.
So our current policy, uh, after looking pretty closely at our current policy, uh, we only allow a maximum of nine percent, uh, compensation i- into the pay range with that. Uh, that means that somebody with twenty years' experience is actually going to take a significant pay cut to come and work for Iron County. Uh, and, and I think that's a good example with the jail. Uh, with, with this latest applicant, we had a quality applicant, uh, because we only offer nine percent of, of total pay, uh, to come into that range even with a significant amount of experience, uh, we lost a, a potential good employee because of that. And we talked about this, as a result, the majority of new hires at Iron County are brand-new employees with zero experience. So we're, we, we're, with every employee that we hire, we have that thirty-two weeks where they are basically not a, not a viable employee. Where by redoing our lateral policy, making it a little bit more attractive, we can cut that time from, to four weeks, from hire date to, to having a viable employee on the road instead of that six or seven months. It can be down to a month. Lateral transfers, so this would basically be a one-for-one transfer. Somebody comes in, allow for four percent advancement into the assigned pay range for each year of verifiable, verified and applicable prior law enforcement experience. Uh, so if you come in at, uh, if you come in at ten, with, with ten years' experience, uh, you're going to come into that pay range, but forty percent of that. This is also pretty across the board, uh, what other agencies are offering. Uh, and, and this is an attractive benefit to come in, basically bring your, e- e- even if we're not paying the same as a lot of other agencies, uh, this makes that blow much more palatable, uh, to have your time recognized, uh, to be able to come in and have your time with another agency recognized and, and compensated for that.
You've got a twenty-five-year career, ten years is going to, to be about forty percent.
To be about forty percent, right?
It's just being fair to that person.
Whereas right now, they would come in with that nine percent from the bottom of the range?
The maximum they could come in, e- even with twenty years' experience.
As soon as I hear that, people, just gone. You'd never see them again.
Yeah.
That's the, that is the last hire that we did with the sheriff's office, the people that called that were already certified. That, uh, as soon as they knew that we only paid nine percent, that was pretty much the end of the discussion we had with them.
They politely ended the call.
They won't even apply.
And Commissioner Blake, you found this was a, a fairly standard practice, this four percent per service year?
It is. Uh, there, there are a lot of agencies that are offering, offering one, one-for-one time to come in, uh, and a lot more in some cases. Uh, uh, offering a lot of things that I, I don't know that we're capable to offer.
Oh, yeah, there's some agencies that are, you know, offering a lot for degrees and certifications they may have. Like, somebody comes to him like with a paramedic, uh, certification, they get, you know, they, they bump them. They bump their pay up.
Right. Debbie?
How is this going to add or does it even affect our compression issues? If we've got someone that's, that's already with us, that's been working and, and there. So we get someone and also we're offering them all of this, and is it going to compress these other people with no, with the wind to go?
So, if we go skip back to, to the beginning, uh, what we're, we're looking at across the board are updating the pay ranges. Th- this is obviously for public safety, uh, because we're, we're kind of trying to bite one piece of the pie at a time. Uh, the sheriff's office a- and corrections represent over forty percent of our employees in the county. Uh, so we're, we're by no means done after, after we look at. Uh, so, we're, we're by no means done after, after we look at, at the sheriff's department. Uh, but to, to address those compression issues, we are looking at that bump across the board. Uh, so, we're not just.
I must have missed that.
No, I, and I wasn't very clear on that, but.
I thought, okay, we had higher on at that, but I didn't realize that that was.
Yeah, it, it, carried it across the board up through the house, just to avoid that, because.
Yeah.
Issues that are ugly, ugly.
Uh, so, lateral transfers, basically coming in as a one-to-one. Uh, here's where we talk about the bottom line. Um, annual wage increases, a- a- and I would love to fund this a hundred percent right now and, and do one of these, but I don't believe that that's feasible, uh, feasible to do. So, we talked about, if, if we were able to, to fund thirty-three percent of this currently, uh, we'd be looking at a total of a hundred and three thou- a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, five, you, you can see it and read it better than I can say it. Uh, it's about a three percent increase, or three-point-five percent increase. Uh, we add benefits into that, we've got sixty-three thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-eighty in, in benefits. So, the total bite to fund this at one-third immediately would be a hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I would propose that, uh, we look at immediately funding at least the thirty-three percent, immediately, to, to reopen the, reopen the budget and, and, and look at those numbers.
Okay, I'm generally in support of this, there are some caveats. Uh, the twenty-five-year, thirty-five-year career path, I think ought to be standardized at thirty years. Law enforcement already get two-and-a-half percent per year from URS compared to two percent for everyone else. So, I think that's a little imbalance. I think the lateral transfer needs to, well, there's a lot of things that need to go beyond patrol and corrections. Betsy, I think it becomes, uh, the, the duty of HR to look at other positions that we're having a hard time filling. Some we're not, some that are clerical in nature, or, uh, I won't, I won't, I won't get on to anything, okay?
Recent example, same thing for the landfill, when we just, um, posted and interviewed for that, we had four total applicants, and one withdrew prior to the interview. So, we had three applicants for the landfill position, where traditionally, we would do the same thing.
And that requirement is CDL, is all?
CDL is the requirement in a few years of, of the equipment.
So, do we not have the same thing, trying to find assessors?
Yes, absolutely.
And how many more? How, how much larger is this issue than patrol and corrections?
It, it absolutely will be county-wide, um, just because, right now, the unemployment rate is so low, if you are not offering a competitive wage and benefits, you're not gonna get it, you're not gonna get qualified applicants. Um, essentially, for the landfill, the person that they hired, that I have on the agenda today, is not coming in with a CDL. You'll have to obtain that, and Bruce is gonna have to essentially train him from the ground up, because that's all they have for applicants.
Okay, does he come in under a training wage?
No, he'll be coming in at the minimum wage.
But he's still not effective, if he doesn't have a CDL, he can't go out and collect cans?
Absolutely not.
So, is there an inequ- an inequity here?
Although not collections.
Yeah, so, he'll, he'll be working in the landfill, probably at the scale house for now, would be my guess, which, um, you know, absolutely, it's, it's necessary for them to put people in the scale.
But in this case, he's a lesser valuable employee. So, my concern here is, how much larger than patrol and correction is this inequity?
It's county-wide.
Then why are we not trying to address the, basically clean up the mess?
And I, I'm sure that Adrian is working on that, um, and as Commissioner Blake said, this is one piece, one piece of the pie. And I know Adrian wanted to be here today, but he was unable to, he had some family commitments. But he did tell me that when he addressed the compression issues in the fall, he did base it on a forty-five-year career, which is not realistic. So, even, even though a lot of our compression issues were addressed in the fall for, for the new budget year, it, it is based on a forty-five-year career path, which, which is, other than Chadne, is gonna work. It's not realistic. So, you know, that's why they, they were trying.
Twenty-three years for myself. Those people don't work down.
Years of service to retire at any age, you do have to have now twenty-five years in public safety and thirty-five years in the, the general retirement system before you can retire at any age. Obviously, you can retire at retirement age, but, you know, that, that's all, probably, is you have to.
But what drives the tenure difference, when, when law gets twenty-two-and-a-half percent per year versus two percent?
And, and that, it gets a little bit different in the tier-two system, too. For, for tier-one, that's what it was, two-and-a-half, and two, general employees now in the tier-two system get one-and-a-half.
As opposed to law enforcement?
As opposed, and I'm not sure if law enforcement still gets two-and-a-half or only two now in the tier-two, I can't remember.
I think they only get two. Only two in the tier-two system.
It's not law enforcement, it's public safety. The years are increased and, uh, the percentage is.
So, still a half a percent. Still a half percent weighted in, in terms of, in favor of law. I think we have some work to do, and I'm not opposed to this adjustment, or, or some adjustment. We've talked about it for so long, I think there's an actual need, but I think the need extends beyond corrections and patrol.
And, and that's, uh, and that's generally recognized across the board. You know, this was the, this, this, we, we've, we've taken care of some issues in the building department, the IT department, uh, in tourism, we've, we've kind of addressed these things uh, to individual, to, to individual departments. At this point, it's, it's the sheriff's office who just happens to be the, the biggest department in the county, but by no means would we, would we stop here. I, I think, I think these changes, these immediate changes are needed because w- we're not able to function as a department without these changes. Or, I shouldn't say function as a department, but, uh, as far as retention and recruitment, I think this is, this is critical to happen now, but by no means is this conversation over. The, I mean, this needs to be addressed county-wide.
So, help me understand the lateral transfer, you're, you're saying that with ten years' experience, you get a forty percent bump?
Well, it, you'd come in, you'd come in on the.
The range.
Go ahead, Sheriff, I'm gonna stay out of it.
No, you'd just come forty percent into the range.
Right, now, when.
Whatever that range may be.
When Adrian and I talked last week, he said he wants the wording to be to allow for up to four percent. Now, that may not be, you actually offer this employee forty percent into the range, it means that you can allow for at least that much, you may offer them twenty percent into the range, or, or fifteen, but at least you can go above that nine.
Where- whereas, right now, they're limited to nine percent.
Yeah, it's a, it's a policy that's kind of kicking our butts.
That would probably be based on energy and so on.
Yeah, and that's, we, we put there on a case-by-case basis, uh, because you're gonna get somebody, I mean, you may get a, you may get a ten-year-old, a ten-year patrol officer that's never done anything, uh, but patrol, and, and never really specialized within patrol. You might get another ten-year-old patrol, ten, ten-year experienced patrol officer who's certified in bike patrol, in SWAT, in accident reconstruction. Uh, you know, there's a myriad of different things, it's, I, I think it's those type of individuals that come in a, at a one-for-one, but I, I think that needs to be, that, that needs to be refined. Uh, a- a- and I would say that that's at the discretion of the sheriff.
Well, and, and again, and what the budget allows, too.
Yes.
That's why it says it allow up to a four percent.
That language covers it well.
It, it does.
One question I have on the, the five-thousand-dollar sign-up bonus, if we went with thirty-three percent, then that drops that down to sixteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars, so I.
Well.
That one's kind of, you know.
I, I think we've got to look at them, I think we've got to look at them separate. I think we, we look at the, at, at the increase, at the thirty-three percent, but I think that five-thousand-dollar signing bonus stands alone.
Okay, that's the first red flag I have.
That's still a, you're saving money, you're, you're money ahead.
Actually, a non-budget item.
It really is.
The signing bonus for.
The signing bonus is non-budget. It doesn't require a budget adjustment.
If you hire a guy that is already both certified, it saves us money, so it's, and, and we budget for their new wage, so it's a non-budget item.
Yeah.
So, several of those are non-budget items, and, and that's why the thirty-three percent, fifty percent, whatever, applies to the shifting the ranges, but some of those others are really more policy statements. And yes, we're gonna have to pay out five thousand, but we are gonna not have to pay out the fuel and the, and the.
And five.
Ten thousand.
All that stuff, so it's, it's actually a non-budget item.
In your research on the, on the five thousand, do you know how most departments handle, um, like a proration of the payback? Is that, was that something you looked into?
My experience, it's just a month.
Like a twenty-four-month?
It just trails off month by month over a twenty-four, it's amortized over a twenty-four.
But it's a two-year payback?
So, moving on, Betsy, I need an itemized, scheduled advance when other departments are gonna be brought in and evaluated the same way.
I'm gonna be on commission meeting in two weeks, asking the exact same thing I'm telling you right now, because I'm having all the same problems. It takes me three years to get an appraiser certified, and it costs me more than seventeen thousand dollars to send them up there. And I have extended, I have a job out now, and I've extended it once, I have two qualified candidates. I won't even tell them what their starting wage is, because I don't.
And by the way, one of those candidates, uh, went here from the interviews.
So, I've got one.
Just recently, so she has one.
I have three trainees in my office, I don't have enough people in my office to take on another trainee. By law, I cannot do it. I'm gonna be here asking the exact same thing in two weeks.
I would propose, sorry.
I'm, I'm staying yet before you ask.
I'm just saying, put me on first, because I have the same problems. It's not, no offense to Mark and Public Safety, but it's easier to get public sentiment to support public safety. Nobody wants to support the assessor's office coming out to.
Until you. Until you don't assess.
I swear that policy wording would, in turn, help you too, because then it would change that maximum nine percent to allow for the same.
Oh, yeah, I, I thank all kinds of the. Thanks for doing all that.
Sure.
It would help her out immensely.
Right, uh, uh, and I agree, I, we, we, we put a lot of work into this, a- and our conversations i- in these meetings, we're not just sheriff's office, sheriff's office, sheriff's office, sheriff's office. It's, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna bite the sheriff's office piece of the pie right now, but we immediately need to, a- a- in fact, we already talked about you're next on the list, because we're all afraid of you. No, but, but no, the, but the assessor's office is critical, and, and that's where we're, a- a- and we're bleeding there. That needs to, I, I mean, we, we need some immediate.
Whatever timeframe you think we need to have, absolutely, I'll let Adrian know, he's working on it. If, if you wanna address more in, in two weeks, at the next meeting.
What I would. Department is, is cri- next critical in terms of assessor. From your point of view, is it roads, is it landfill, is it IT, planning, zoning?
Well, I think IT.
IT, we just took care of.
Would be okay, because they just got an, an increase.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm rattling departments, I don't give a damn specifically, I wanna know who we're not taking care of.
Let me make a proposal, could I, can I make a proposal, Mr. Chairman?
She, she got nothing, um, on our last inquiry, yet she was willing to do Pauline's job for her, trained in the auditor's office, do FTO, I mean, we have a lot of people that have been overlooked.
Yeah, and I'm sympathetic to that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I propose that we have budget interviews, again, but just for wages. I don't think we wanna bring, I mean, there'll be public meetings, but I don't think we wanna bring these, every department up in public meeting here and hassle. But let's sit down with all the information we've got from this study, and the information that you, department heads, will present to us in a meeting, just like we have our regular budget meetings, and then work from there. And, like, say, I think IT, we're probably there. But let's, I, I think that's the way we should, uh, look at this, or go about this.
That emotion.
That is emotion.
I'm heartfelt, so I, I'm just gonna come in from the heart. And so much respect for everybody that needs to be looked at, but meanwhile, we're sinking, we are sinking. And these facts support what's impacting our safety and security for not only us inside the facility, outside the facility, the compu- the community. We need something a little quicker, we do, we've been beating this down a little bit. I've been involved, it's been beaten and beaten, and we need to do something, like, soon, we can't just keep putting it off. It's not changing what's happening for us, and we are getting burned-out people, we are getting people, if you look at the overtime compared to just, I mean, everybody is jumping over a dollar to pick up a dime. It's just, it's just getting disheartening, because I know everybody needs to be fixed, but right now, we are, we are sinking. As a family, as a friend, would you throw someone that's sinking a life preserve? Of course you would, you would not sit there and watch them sink. We need to keep what we have, we need to, we need to keep the foundation, what we've already built. We do, we just need to make it stronger, and so I just ask that you take that into consideration, because we are struggling.
We're not disagreeing with that.
I mean, why are we always going to, I only want to consider three percent.
Yeah, that's one thing.
Well.
We do that every time, and then, huh, we're right there.
I, I'm gonna be honest with you, we actually figured in lower, we, we figured in lower percentages, but I took them off because I didn't feel like it was appropriate to look at anything below thirty-three percent.
I, I want them to understand, it's not that we don't think we need to fix today, I think something has to be passed today. Not in two weeks, not in six months, because I, I'm at the heart, too. I've got a, I've got a son, and his family is depending on that job. And he has clawed and fought for years to stay there because he loves his job. But if, if they're going nowhere, then what do you do?
That's where Mr. Started before the show conference started, I thought, I, this is exactly where you just said, Debbie, and this, this, I think they was on path to give these this.
Right, but now you're.
Then this conversation came up.
Look, I, 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 I would ask that, that we pass this today and start tomorrow on the rest of the county. That, that it's not, that it's not delayed.
Well, I just wanna add one thing to Lieutenant Cothers', is her points she brought up. We got, I'll just bring one, one deputy, I won't say his name just out of privacy, but, uh, consistently, every pay period, he's, because we're, we're short-staffed, we're down people, he's running a hundred-and-fifty hours of pay period. That's a lot.
It's too many.
That's, that, that's, you know, you're normally running eighty to eighty-six hours, he's running a hundred-and-fifty, because we are trying to cover holes in schedules.
And I, I spoke to a deputy on Friday, Thursday, uh, and think he, he was, he was, he was excited because he'd actually taken a couple of days off on a weekend, to, because his wife was making him go to a concert. Uh, but he hasn't, he doesn't remember the last time that he had a pay period under a hundred-and-twenty hours, and that's, that's bouncing between the court, and then going to help out in corrections, and then back to the court, and basically working a double shift of, of court duty, and then corrections duty, and then doing it all over again seven days a week.
No, it's just a family's commitment, you, you know, and I know, you know, that there's money in it that's involved, which is great for these extra checks, that some get to have that overtime and claim that money. But they're giving up a lot, too, that they can't buy back.
Well, and if you look back, I, I mean, I, I proposed a thirty-three percent, because that was the very minimum that I thought was acceptable, but we have fifty percent, we have seventy-five percent. I, the, the more we can fund, a- and, and in, you know, in these conversations, Dan being involved in these conversations, we have some money to fund this, but I, th- the quicker that we can address this problem a- and get back on track as a county, the better.
I, I know through our meetings, I, I pushed for a minimum of fifty percent. And, uh, and that's, like I say, um, collaborative effort to make sure we have the numbers to back it up at fifty percent.
But next time, don't bring new information posted on the board that we haven't, that you haven't sent out, that we haven't had time to look at.
Right, and that's.
I don't enjoy coming and seeing brand-new stuff that's not even here on the, on my screen. Again, I'm not opposed. I understand the reasoning and the logic for this. We've talked about it many times before. Still insist that we, we deal with other departments that are handling the same, the same issues. People in patrol, especially in corrections. We've got quite a problem with making sure pieces are maintained within the facility. I understand that, so.
I understand the emotion, um, but I would like with this statement to take some of that out of it. And you said, Debbie, let's not wait two weeks, but let's do it right. Two weeks is, is not gonna make or break this. And the reason I say this is because we just barely got these figures today. I think we need a little longer to look at. We need to sit down with Dan. And, and I'm not saying I'm against this, but, you know, maybe, maybe we don't need to do thirty-three percent. Maybe we need to do more. And I think if we can have some time, uh, expedited, well, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna leave you hanging for a month. But I feel like we need some time as a commission with our auditor to sit down with, and look at these figures a little closer. And start to bring in the other, and I think we can, you know, say that we're probably gonna do the increases in the sheriffs and corrections first. We don't have to wait till we have everything figured out before we could move forward with your department, but, but I think we need to factor in the others that Brother, or Brother Brinkerhoff's talking about, and, uh. Anyway, yeah, old brother. Sorry. Anyway, um, so that's my feeling on it.
Based on the discussion, I wonder if the lateral transfer maybe hadn't that, that bit of policy. Maybe we could bring that back in two weeks as a countywide policy. Would that be inappropriate? It sounded like, I didn't say, I didn't hear any opposition.
Transfer needs to apply.
Would that be an appropriate universally? I just wonder, yeah.
Across the board, yeah, yeah.
It'd be universally applied, yes.
Yeah, I just.
So back to tech, back to our roster, uh, right now, we, like we, we said earlier, there's five people that were viable on that roster. We currently know of three openings that we, that we have, or will have, uh, this year. And, uh, working through those five viable candidates, we've already eliminated two of those off that list because of background issues. So we're down to the, the bare minimum of three. The three that we know that we're going to, to fill, or need to fill. Uh, there's other, others that are awaiting a decision based on the, on the commission, on what they're going to do. Um, but, uh, the lateral policy will help us in that recruiting, right? We closed that, uh, that roster in April, and it's already expired. Typically, in years past, we can, those will last us eighteen months, and we're not there. We're already helping Joanna with, uh, with her, her stuff. To use her words, we're bleeding, bleeding profusely, uh, with this.
Economy's extremely hot right now, so we have to be competitive.
And, and to wait two more weeks puts us further behind with post, uh, puts us further behind it, getting people hired in that process, and I'm, and I respect that decision. But, uh, just something to consider, the longer this goes, the further we're out. Right now, uh, we have a, a position, or, or two slots slated for the August, uh, academy, because that's the earliest we can get them in. They're talking about opening a July one, right now. My next available date that I can get somebody into the academy without any issues is January of twenty, twenty nineteen. So, if, if we can do the lateral side, that helps us greatly, number one. We need to look at the whole, the whole picture. Sorry.
No, thank you. Anything else?
Um, promotion?
I'm not opposed to changing the lateral at this point, because that's across the board. And I think we have leeway there with the way it's, uh, it's worded, that, you know, we don't just automatically give people.
The, the sheriff's office isn't the only one that, that that would be appropriate, but that it would not be appropriate countywide. That we'd need to address the, the needs of each individual department.
Right, separately.
I'm ready to make a motion, if there's nothing else. I move that we, uh, go back to the.
I'm trying, John.
Shows the range, go back to one that shows the.
Kicker again.
Policy on ranges. So I can word it. Oh, there you were there. Okay, I move that countywide, we allow for up to four percent advancement into the assigned pay range for each year of verified applicable prior experience, and whatever the, the department, you know, applicable to that department uh, when recruiting and hiring employees, as justified on a case-by-case basis, and as the department budget allows. I also move that we, um, offer a signing bonus of five thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, newly hired deputies that are already post-certified, and that we will talk about other departments, uh, you know. We'll talk about a signing bonus for other departments after we receive more information on what it costs to train those people. That's my motion.
And I'll second that.
All, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then where do we leave the proposal today?
What was your vote on that one, Commissioner?
What?
Did everybody vote aye on that?
Did you vote aye? Oh, sorry.
I mumbled.
I'm deep.
Okay, I got another motion to, uh, to clear up what, uh, or to answer Commissioner Brinkerhoff's question. My, this motion is that we, um, schedule and sit down with, uh, all the department heads, uh, and talk just wages. Not, not, we have our normal budget interviews in the fall, but this would be just a, a, a budget interview to just talk about wages and benefits. And then, uh, make our decision how we move forward with the other departments.
And who will set that priority on, uh, interviews? I'm on board with you, but who will set that priority?
Should we let ADR, HR?
Uh, A, yeah, let's have HR set the priority.
Can I?
To add to your motion that sets the priority, but commission, or the assessor's office is right after. I've got a problem. I've got a recruitment out right now. I have a chief deputy that's retiring in a month. And I cannot find anyone to replace her. She's putting in the same hundred and fifty hours, but she's exempt, so she's not getting paid for it.
Yeah, she does live here.
Well, I assume Adrian will put you there in that second spot.
Can I add to the motion as well, uh, that, uh, we don't drag this out, uh, for months?
Well, that's big and time-specific, Joe.
That I'd like to, uh, uh, you know, I know it's a tight schedule, but I'd like this resolved by next commission meeting.
I agree.
We'll do our best. But my, my motion stands, but we, we, uh, I'll add to it that we do this in an expeditious but judicial manner.
Okay, and I'll second it with the hopes that we have something back on the agenda in two weeks.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Yeah, expeditious but judicious. Okay.
That's a pretty liberal term.
Moving on to item number ten, uh. Discussion and request approval of landscaping contract for the Iron County Public Safety Building. We'll have Lester speak to this.
Sorry, I wasn't able to get this in your packet. I was trying to get things done, but my bidding process didn't close itself.
Thank you.
Last thing on Friday, so. I actually only had one company commit a bid. If, if we go back to last year, we actually tentatively approved, um, a landscaping contract for the Public Safety Building. But, uh, deal with, because, um, we decided that the county didn't want us foot the bill for this, that we needed to include it in to the state contract, and if you go to your last page, this is the breakdown for that state contract. Um, so in there, um, we but, or we put in there to, part of the state's bid for that building was sixty-five thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars. That was assigned to landscaping for this project. Um, during the budgeting cycle, I was extremely busy and was not able to attend, and that portion was missed in, in our budget this year to be included for the Public Safety Building for landscaping. Um, we do have money in the budget that I could cover, cover this in my, my current budget for that building. We'll just make a shortfall on that one when we hit there.
But that money's still factored into the retainage and the payout to, to Carter's on Public Safety. That, that number was.
Was it? Because this wasn't part of Carter's number. This was part of our total number going.
But it's part of our contract with Wayne Christensen.
Yes.
Is that not correct, Dan? I'm, I'm quite sure we covered that, Lester.
Yeah, it was. It was part of a, it was part of the, this was included in the contract for Wayne Christensen. What hap- when we, when we did the, the contract for.
Well, those monies are already budgeted. Those are monies are already in our coffers.
There, there are, but they're not in my budget.
Well, that's your problem.
I know, that's, that's why I'm standing here.
No, it, well, we just need to go back and charge it against the, the project, not against you, uh, against your maintenance budget.
If it's, I don't know if it's.
Is that not correct?
The problem is, is we, when we've just been working on this this past week, with the, um, clearing up the books for the end of the year, we are capitalizing the building as it is. Um, I'm gonna have to look at it and see. It may make sense to put it in Lester's budget. I, I don't know if we have to say where we're gonna do it, but I don't know if it's, the money may be there, but it's not budgeted to be spent as far as I know, in either location.
Yes, that was my understanding, too.
So I think if you were to prove for it to be spent, we could look and see where the most appropriate place to put it would be.
Well, it'd be our intent to make sure it comes out of that construction.
Right.
Budget, and transfers into his. So at any rate, I'd move the approval of the landscape contract to whom?
Sir. Um, MacArthur Landscaping was, uh, MacArthur? Very fir- very first page.
Right there on the top.
You, you have, you have a copy of his?
It's not read enough for me to see.
Yeah, it, you have a copy of their proposal. They were the only ones that proposed, uh, this was out for just a little over two, two weeks.
Satisfy the, the intent of the law by advertising, so.
Um, the nice thing is.
Motion is to award landscape contract to MacArthur Landscaping and city address.
Yeah, yeah, and your total is one of the second page.
Sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty cents, and, and direct those monies to be transferred out of the construction budget to, your maintenance budget to cover the cost. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, while you're there, let's have an update on the elevator.
Um, they haven't called me back. I've been trying to get hold of them all last week. It is essentially usable at this point. We are waiting for, I'm waiting for that slip of paper from the state of Utah saying it's legal to use. Um, Zwick Construction has stepped up, and they are unhappy with the finish we have, because that's, there was con- uh, contract confusion between Thessen Crump and Zwick on the interior of that elevator. Uh, Zwick has done a change order that is not coming back to the county, but they are taken care of to finish the interior cab of the elevator.
But that doesn't preclude substantial completion from the state and from.
Yeah, yeah, so that, at this point, I'm just waiting for the, the certificate of, from the elevator inspector, saying that it, I can't legally operate that elevator until such time as I have that certificate on site.
Were you jogging again today?
Yeah.
Now, what about the landscape here?
Landscape here, I have not proceeded with yet. Um, I've been waiting for some further direction on how you want me to pursue that with the water situation with Parowan. I have been hesitant to, uh, address it. Um, but I am more than willing to start doing that. Um, we're probably going to eliminate fifty percent of the lawn here anyways, and go into more of a zero scape, so we're using less water anyways. Um, the only lawn we'll be planning on leaving will be the two big ones in the front, and they'll, they'll actually be cut down as well, so.
Mr. The Waterman, are you comfortable to move on? Do we need to get this cleaned up?
The water will be available, the contract's supposed to be July tenth, so.
So if I start, if I start advertising by this point, because if I, if I start advertising now, I'm gonna be a month out before we even start. So it'll be July when we start.
When you separate the two functions and do the zero scape.
And then the grass.
Grass.
Yeah, this is what I will do.
And then, have you done anything on the sign? Because I told you I talked to Bill McMurren last, whatever. I told him I'd call him back after we decided.
Yeah, I haven't done anything since our last conversation on the sign. Yeah, I haven't done anything since our last conversation on the sign.
Is that something we still want to do? Uh, Mesa gave us a little rough design on that, on a monument?
Yeah, I think that monument's gonna be real. I mean, we don't have anything on the front of the building that says what it is. We've gotta have that.
So, okay.
Follow up on that today.
Yeah.
So going back to the landscaping, if they get done in time, can we connect to the culinary to get by? Is that?
Perrin, Perrin City is allowing us connect to the, the culinary. Um, there's extra steps and extra cost with that, obviously.
So it'd be best if we didn't have to do that?
Yeah, if we could avoid it, that would be best, but we not, might not be able to avoid it. Um, nice thing with the zero escaping is that one's actually easier to do because I can have them do the system and just not connect the valves and run it off of hoses and timers because it, you know, they water slow but long.
Well, what do you have on zero? Some drip feed for?
Yeah, you, yeah, you just have drip feed for your shrub, shrubs and your trees.
Yeah.
That's easier to maintain than a, than a lawn. I could do the lawn, but it would be, involve my department coming over and hand watering the lawn for.
Yeah. Well, called Bill again. I thought he was already doing some things on the sign, but apparently, but between Ned and Garrett.
There's been a lot of confusion. Things kind of happened down there.
Mr. Adams, you said they're starting on the, on July, so when is it gonna be ready?
Well, Ju- Steve said July tenth is the date that the contractor has to be finished.
Oh, finished.
Finished, but they, but they're still haven't started. They, apparently the PCI, there were some family things. He said you can't start till the twenty-ninth of this month. So that only gives them about forty calendar days.
Who's the contract?
PCI.
Who said that?
No problem.
Okay.
All right, moving on to personnel. Uh, number one, the Sheriff's Department.
Judiciary system.
Oh, yeah. Made sense to me.
Um, we had two employees in the Sheriff's Department that have completed their post, um, and are ready to move to the next step. These increases are for Aaron Powell and Michael Hilliger, and they will move from the sixteen fifty to the seventeen fifty per hour. Um, this would have been effective on April twenty-second.
These are replacements.
These are current employees that have completed post. Um.
Should we do them separate, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, let's just do each department separate.
I'd move the approval of pay increase for Michael Hilliger for success, successful completion of post and also for Aaron Powell. For the same reason, effective date is, is four twenty-two, two oh eight, moves advance to seventeen fifty even.
Um, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Landfill.
The next one we have is the new employee for the landfill, um, Wade Brush, uh, is coming in as a landfill technician. His starting date or effective date will be May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. This is a backfill of a vacant position that was, uh, left by the resignation of Stephen Hanson.
Okay, I move approval of new hire Wade Brush as a full-time landfill technician, effective five twenty-one, two thousand eighteen, backfill of vacant position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. Uh, IT.
Um, IT, we have two new employees coming in, and if you recall, um, after the resignation of Brett Robinson, we created two positions rather than one. So we have David Nielsen coming in as a web developer. His effective date will be June fourth, two thousand eighteen. Um, the next one is Ron Larson. He will be coming in as a network administrator, um, effective date May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Well, technically, these are point five new hires.
Well, yeah, two positions as the result of losing one.
I'd move the approval of Dave Nielsen to replace, well, one board as a web developer, effective six-four, two thousand eighteen, and also the Ron Larson as a full-time network administrator, effective May twenty-one, two thousand eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one is a new hire for the attorney's office. Um, Benjamin Thornell will be coming in. Um, this is kind of a unique situation. It's a little bit like when Chad Dotson came in. He's coming in, um, uncertified, so he will, he will start, um, at one wage as a pre-attorney. As he passes the state bar, he will get an increase. And then, once he is licensed to practice law in the state of Utah, he will go to the minimum in their salary range, um, which is the forty-eight, five twenty-four.
In the event he doesn't pass the bar.
Um, I don't know that they've addressed that yet.
Certainly, it has to be a timeframe.
Um, yes, he, he is scheduled to, to take the bar, I think, in the next couple of months. Do you know, Mike?
The bar's usually in July.
Yeah.
February and in July. There's two times a year.
So July, he would be, um, taking the bar exam, so we would know in July.
So what do we do if he doesn't pass? What's the consequence?
Um, I would assume that we could terminate him. He does have the standard six-month probationary period as a, as an employee coming in.
To the attorney. Yeah.
Well, as a recommendation.
So the motion is to approve the, the temporary hire of Benjamin Thornell as a full-time deputy attorney with the condition that he pass the Utah State Bar Exam by.
July?
Yes, if that's the next testing period, July.
Testing period, which is somewhere in July.
They won't know until sometime in September.
Whether or not they pass.
Maybe even the beginning of October.
So his.
Blitting hairs, probably.
Yeah.
How do, how do we keep someone on?
I, I mean, I guess you can say by his, the end of his six-month probationary period, which would be in, um, November, June, July, August, November. Yeah, November.
Oh, what the hell?
Had to count on my fingers because I, I wasn't prepared for that question.
Then he's out well, as long as he probationary.
Yes, absolutely.
So he, he can be removed without cause.
In that six months.
In that six months.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, whatever the motion is, move to approve the new hire of Benjamin Thornell.
Okay, just before I second that, a question, Mike. Um, as John said, to fire someone is, in that department is the, uh, county attorney's prerogative. Can we, are we okay with putting that in our motion? I mean, I'm fully agree that if he doesn't pass the bar, then, you know, we shouldn't keep him. But can we do that as a motion to?
Well, as a deputy county attorney, um, correct, you would not be able to go and fire somebody that's a deputy of an elected official.
Right.
So we'll just leave it up to the probationary period to, to provide that avenue.
Yeah, I mean, I think you leave it to the elected official as you would with any other deputy position. I know that, I mean, our office has been down an individual for, like, some time, and I know that we're feeling the pinch as well as others have noted, and so I don't imagine that we want to keep a guy around that's not gonna help address the issue.
Well, we still can't do anything until he fails the bar.
Yeah, there, there are some things that he can do to help out right away. Uh, you can be a court-certified, um, law clerk essentially, and you can still go practice cases in the justice court, and that's happened before in our office. That's what I did as a law student. Tried a number of cases as a law student, so you can still do things to help our office, help relieve some of the workload. But I think there's a time limit on that as well. You don't get to be perpetually a non-attorney.
So what does the motion need to include? Simply the.
I think you should just have them.
Probationary.
If you're inclined to accept the new hire, you, you make the motion to do the new hire and you make the elected official deal with the problem, that there's a problem afterward.
That is the motion.
Responsibility lies anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, second at first.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
And aye.
Couldn't remember who seconded what.
We're good.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, and that's, that's all for me today, I think.
Thank you.
Just, um, the, the department meetings, when do you want those to start?
I don't know, it's three o'clock.
Three o'clock today? Well, um, I am not prepared to stand in and discuss that information.
Soon as you and Adrian can be, uh, prepared, then just, I want you to just email us and we can suggest the times and.
I'll, I'll have him get with you, uh, who's gonna be out, I'd be honest with you, in three days and come this week.
Okay.
As far as I know, I don't always get all the information, but as far as I know.
Sometimes too much.
And then I just throw those increases down.
Okay.
Or Ben, the starting wage of eighteen sixty-six, the next move would be twenty-one, and then the next would be the full.
Gotcha.
My home is empty right now.
All right, non-delegated items. Prairie dogs.
Shall I take prairie dogs happily off?
Aye.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
We don't have that ugly reminder, Joe.
We, okay, uh, I mean, it's done.
Yeah, if we could do something about Larry Pendleton's down here on Two Hundred Child. That's the, the building depart- building people are not affected anymore negatively, but, oh my heaven, Larry's built down there. So the farmers are still affected pretty negatively. I'm sorry, Charlie.
Still go under the old plan, you might still have to approve some tape. They still have a choice for a month.
Right. And Larry can get four D permits, but he's in the city, so it's kinda hard. I know he has his pellet gun. He needs to get some more. Needs to get the permit and get a couple of guys out there with pellet guns. More, anyway.
Anything on boards?
I don't have anything on the board.
I don't. Let's leave the courthouse unknown for another time or two till we resolve the issue of the landscape and the sign and the elevator.
I've just got one more courthouse issue that brought to my attention, wondering about, uh, some additional artwork of some sort for this hallway upstairs, so it doesn't look like, quote, "a prison corridor."
Dan, John, are you offended by that? Oh, good.
Dan and I have kinda discussed that a little bit.
The original plan, it was cut out for budget reasons.
Right.
So you want to get more budget for it, they can get more signs. It's.
It's back on us, because we took eighteen thousand bucks out of the original art. Whatever we want to do up here.
That might be one of the things we want to look at, you know.
Hallways are narrow.
Say we're good for this year, but let's put some money in the budget next year to add some more artwork.
We have, Dan and I have talked about a few options that are probably less expensive, maybe, uh, replicas of old maps or a few, some cool. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that was kind of some of the thoughts we had had on that.
Red, orange.
Yeah.
One of the things that, um, one of the happy coincidences, uh, that with the, the finish on things, this, uh, this, uh, glazed maple kind of matches around, even with, um, like, the, the board for our public notices matches the map. It's really was, uh, we didn't really expressly plan that, but it worked out very well, so.
Actually, there was, there was designing in that. There was, there was foresight. We knew there was maple and maple, so.
Pardon?
There wa- there was foresight in that. There, we knew both of them were maple. That's what we were trying to match.
Awesome.
Oh, and the design.
We ready to cut bait?
I think so. Any.
Mr. Chairman?
Anything else?
Second.
Adjourned.
We need to publicly, now everybody's gone, we need to publicly thank everyone that's down the decorating in this building that's nice on.
I've got shot.
Should I give you the spills if you didn't pay attention after?
Um, I've taken pictures with lots of flat people in the past.